Okay, if I could get folks to take their seats, we're gonna call this meeting to order in just a few seconds. Ladies, you guys are recording, right?
Yeah, call me later this weekend.
I need, I need help.
Fire it up. Yeah, we'll talk later. Can't believe it's already almost the first week.
I know. Tomorrow, right?
No, the 22nd, I think.
The 22nd.
This week.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for bringing us together. I just ask, Lord, that you would give us your wisdom, and, Father, give us ears to hear and help us to understand the depths of everything we discuss tonight. May we honor and glorify you. All this we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Member Olson.
Good evening.
Member Berentine.
Here.
Member Gillett.
Present.
Member Martinez.
Present.
Member Yates.
Present.
And Mayor Jefferson.
Here.
She didn't call my name.
Member Russell, I'm sorry.
Present.
All seven present.
All seven are present.
Thank you for that. I'll move us on to Agenda Item 5. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. At this time, I entertain a motion on 5A.
Moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the approval of 5A or amendments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 6. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. We do have several speakers signed up this evening. Our first speaker is Kathleen Bailey in Inglewood, resident, addressing council regarding the integral report, and on deck is Doug Cohn. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey.
Good evening. Kathleen Bailey, 4686 South Jason. Had Inglewood followed industry standard practice and state codes concerning employee health and safety, I would not be before you. But at every point of choice, Inglewood failed to prioritize employee health and safety over budget and disposal costs and other concerns. And now Inglewood is in defense mode because of those grotesquely negligent priority choices. As I previously presented, Integral used only selected sludge sample sets and processed that selected data through the program Pro UCL, which tosses out values above a preset range and calculates adjusted average for the remaining. Then Integral entered the resulting Pro UCL adjusted average values into the RASRAD, producing the adjusted average radiation dose cancer risk that Integral presented in their Inglewood Integral's 2017 Risk Assessment. What Integral did was significantly different from the standard practice that CDM and Inglewood did for the 2003 and 2007 Risk Assessments. For both those assessments, the precarious program MACZ sludge analysis data was run directly in the RASRAD in order to identify the actual, real-time radiation dose exposure cancer risk for workers. Pro UCL and Statistica, which Integral used in their stockpiled sludge analysis, are used for analysis of large legacy superfund sites, full of unknown and insufficient data. But the Allen Water Filtration Plant Site is a small-known site, not a large, complicated legacy superfund site. The Allen Water Filtration Plant had significant available real-time data allowing for site-specific, real-time sludge radiation dose assessment, but that was not done. Why? Because for Inglewood, the use of Pro UCL and Statistica assured that Inglewood's 2017 Risk Assessment Report would conclude what the lowest possible cancer risk assessment values they could achieve, adjusted average values based on selected data. If that didn't cause you pause, what I'm going to share next is such an elaborate error that it challenges the validity and integrity of Integral's entire report. Integral divided their sludge analysis into three periods: 2002 through 2016, 2002 through 2009, and 2010 through 2016. In Integral's analysis of the impact of the multiple uncovered high-level stockpiled sludge, the West Storage Area, Integral concludes, surprise, surprise, that the high-level uncovered stockpiled sludge had little impact on the radiation dose exposure for the workers. And Integral provided a lengthy and detailed analysis and comparisons of the impact of the stockpiled sludge on each of Integral's three sludge periods. It was very impressive. But there was just one major problem. The stockpiling had not begun until the 2011 sludge. So there was no stockpiled sludge during the period 2002 through 2009. Yet Integral has provided an impressive, detailed, and lengthy analysis of the impact of the stockpiled sludge on that period, 2002 through 2009. And I've attached something for you to look at. Let me repeat. Integral produced and presented a lengthy detail analysis on something that didn't even exist. But it sure looked good, right? So council members, do you still believe we have an accurate answer yet as to the safety of the sludge? I wanted to take a couple of minutes to look at the attachment so that you can see that I am not... You already have the entire report, so I didn't spend my money making copies of the actual data analysis, and you guys have the actual number crunching, which I don't have. So I simply provided a table, one of the tables, Table 5.5, concerning 2002 through 2009. And it breaks out the East Drying Area, the West Storage Area, and Combined Storage. But there was no West Storage Area, and therefore there couldn't be any Combined Storage Area, and this entire data, I'm not sure where they came up with it. I will continue in the next several council meetings doing continued closer looks at Integral's report for other issues. I wanted to just take a moment. Even though this presentation is void of fact in its analysis, it did give an example of something they consistently did. They combined, at least in this presentation, two separate pathways, plant ingestion from the garden and in other soil ingestion just from incidental. And so they determined, in here, I'm running out of time, that the garden, the outdoor worker...
Mrs. Bailey, please conclude your comments.
Certainly. I'm just gonna say, and I'll talk about this in detail another time, they've decided the outdoor worker did not eat any vegetables from the garden, the giant garden that they all had on the plant site. So it's a very interesting use of pathways, exposure pathways as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council for Mrs. Bailey? Seeing none, I'll move us on to our next speaker, which is Doug Cohn. Good evening, Mr. Cohn. And on deck is Elaine Holtz. 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 Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm gonna try to talk louder. I was told I don't talk loud enough. First of all, congratulations, Manager Keck, being a finalist in the competition to receive the Navigator Award on Priority-Based Budgeting. That's pretty cool. Sometimes a person comes along with a clear vision and the necessary skills to make the vision a reality. Next Monday, I would like to invite you all to come over to our Historic Society Talk, Inglewood Speedway, the legend continues. The racetrack has been closed for 38 years. On the Facebook site, 2,800 people are still following the Inglewood Speedway. Why does so many people care after a whole generation? The difference, I believe, is the passion and the abilities of one man and his family, Charlie Codner. One person, the right person, can make a difference. Charlie bought the track from Clark &amp; Kuland in 1950. There was a report that, the next day, his wife said, "I don't want to say it," said his wife Marion, "but I thought buying the track was the most foolish thing he ever did." Regardless, the Inglewood Speedway became a family-run business with Charlie, his wife Marion, his sons Don and Richard, daughter Charlene, and Don's wife Betty Ruth, doing most all of the work and keeping it going. John Clark also continued to run the concessions up till the track closed in 1979. The Codners wanted the track to be the best. They always maintained the racing surfaces and the seating areas and the concessions. They paid attention to the changing racing scene, putting in the figure eight in 1964. Rich, Charlie's son, also brought new and exciting ideas to the track to draw crowds and keep racing as inexpensive as possible. The football derby, the chain races, Orville the Daredevil Clown, motorcycles jumping buses, crashing cars through thick blocks of ice, the mini-stocks, women's demolition derbies, and new classes, the street races and the sportsmen, and the claimer divisions were some of the tricks that Richard showcased for the delighted fans who came through the gate each week during the 1970s. There are some people with a vision and the expertise to overcome obstacles and accomplish great things. Other racetracks in Colorado have passed into history, and few remember them. The reason that so many people still care about the history of the Inglewood Speedway is the leadership of the Codner family. They were remarkable business people. They had a vision and were able to adapt to changing times. There were continuous challenges during all of those years, and they were able to overcome them. One person, the right person, can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if council has any questions for you this evening, Mr. Cohn. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Elaine Holtz. Did I get it right? No? I hear, I feel like I'm repeating exactly what you're telling me. I'll give it one more try. I'm sorry.
It's not an O, it's a U.
Holtz.
Give him some grace here.
I'm sorry. I keep what you're...
It's a Colorado accent.
Not German, it's Dutch. Anyway, Elaine Holtz from Lincoln Street. Number one, thank you, Doug, because in the early 70s, we had planned to move to Colorado. I was sorry when it didn't happen, and I would have enjoyed that racetrack. But anyway, I'm here to talk about other things. Primarily, things that are going to be happening this evening from other people. And again, since 2009, when I became involved in the city affairs, is when I got involved in the budget, and the person who started me on that was Doug Cohn. But anyway, to put it simply, I have a feeling that because of your questions and because of the expressions on some of your faces, you don't quite understand a budget. But let me make it very simple for you. A budget is a report of what you are taking in, which is considered income, and what you are spending of that income or what is going out. When you have an organization that is sizable, you are required by law to have what they call a balanced budget. Big mystery name. Well, there are many ways of doing a balanced budget. One way is what I call a false balanced budget. I'll explain this to you. If you have started the city on a minus $7 million and your revenue, which is your income, has not been doing as well as it has done before, which means that not only are you starting out with $7,000 that you have to make sure goes back in the kitty from wherever it came from, it's a loan that you're loaning yourself, and you have to pay it back. But now, it's increasing because you're not taking in enough revenue, so now that $7 million gets bigger and bigger with every bit of loss that you occur. But your costs are still remaining there, so what do you do? What I suspect has been done in Inglewood for many years is what I call a false budget. Now, according to the accountants who come every year to do the accounting, they do not do a forensic accounting. They do not look at the figures. They look at the procedure. And if the procedure is correct, they consider it acceptable. However, they do look at that, probably that bottom line, and they'll make a comment on that. Any good CPA will do that. But here's what I see has been happening. Money is being borrowed from another area, and I know this for a fact because that's what our previous city manager did to the fire department, and we heard it from the horse's mouth. Every area of our city has their own sort of pot that they're responsible for that gives them the right to use according to what their needs are. Well, I think what's been happening here is those pots have been moved around, have been borrowed from, from time to time, and never replaced like the fire department, or it's coming out of reserves. In which case, it looks like it's balanced. Because I have $10 million, $10,000 here, and I'm spending $10,000, it's a balanced budget. However, if you're taking money to make it appear that way, then I call it a false budget because it should show that on the last report, that this is, we were in a deficit, this is how we made it up, and where the source came from. It's very simple. If you don't have the money, you don't spend it. But I want to say one other thing to you. This has been going on for a long time, and you people have inherited a mess. But you can get out of it. You have to cut back on perks, and you're gonna have to be very careful how you spend your money and make sure that you get the best deal for the bucks. And you're gonna have to eliminate some things that you would like, those little extras, in order to put us back on square one. Because, believe it or not, the employees are not responsible. Because the public is looking to you, because you either approve something or disprove it. And if you don't know what the purpose is, or you don't understand the finances, you need to investigate until you do know. That's your job. And we hired you. Thank you.
See if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, thank you, Elaine, for coming and speaking this evening. I'll move us on to Agenda Item 7. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We do have two speakers signed up this evening. The first is Scott Gilbert, here to speak about campaign finance reports, deadlines, and on deck is Jerry Walker. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor, members of council. Scott Gilbert, 4425 Fox. Hey, I can actually probably make this pretty quick. I know the mail ballots start going out on October 16th. And as a, we follow the state deadline for campaign finance reports, which is that they're due by the end of the day, October 17th, which means that there's an overlap. I mean, they're... Even though the deadline, the reports go up pretty fast, they're available to the public pretty speedy fashion, I just wish that we would, as a home rule city, I wish Inglewood would move back and set at least one earlier deadline. Maybe one that would appear a week or two before the ballots go out. Because as a voter, I always want to see like who's financially supporting candidates, where they're spending money, and for all the obvious reasons. So, that's it. I realize, you know, that this may fall to another council, obviously. But if so, I'll stop by here again sometime and bring it up. But there's my suggestion, just one earlier deadline. I looked at the state deadlines for the, I checked the last years for county commissioner candidates. I didn't realize they have 13 reporting deadlines before ballots go out, but I think one, a couple of weeks or a week ahead would do us. So, that's my wish list for Christmas.
Thank you, sir. See if you have any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Berentine.
Did you contact the Election Commission?
No, I've stopped here right now.
All right.
Yeah. Would that be a good thing to do?
I don't know, but I'm gonna ask.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Move on to Jerry Walker, here to speak about, question on the budget. Good evening, Mr. Walker. We are doing a public hearing on the budget this evening, sir. Are you intending to testify at the public hearing regarding the budget?
No, sir. Jerry Walker on Pearl Street. No, sir, there were two boards out there, one for and one opposing. There wasn't one for questions.
Thank you, sir.
I haven't made my mind up yet, but I do have a few questions for you. On the plane back from Washington, DC yesterday, somehow the budget ended up in my briefcase. I don't know how. And I ran across a couple of things I had questions about. On page 129, the city manager has been bringing revenue into our city until 2018. And there's nothing there for that particular figure, and I was wondering why that might be. On page...
Could I ask for a point of clarification, Mayor?
Please.
I just want to make sure that he knows that this isn't going into the public hearing record. But if you brought these up at the public hearing, then some of the...
Those questions would be on the record.
I just want to make sure that you know that it won't be on the record for the budget if you don't do it during the budget hearing time. But if you don't mind, and it's just this, that's great. I mean, I would agree that for a point of order, that this probably needs to go into the public hearing because I'm desperately trying to look up the pages he's talking about. And I think the information needs to be part of the public hearing record for the meeting, for the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, this is...
I don't think you have to be pro or con the budget to talk, so.
Thank you, council. If I could have this point of order. Mr. Walker, this is your decision whether or not to testify at the public hearing, or to take your time now. You're hearing the comments here from council suggesting that they would prefer to make some of your questions and comments as part of the public record, so perhaps we could bring you up during that testimony, during that portion of testimony, if you'd like, or you can continue on now.
Well, I wouldn't mind coming back up. I mean, I'm not for or against yet. I haven't made my decision. I need some answers to questions. So I don't know whether you would bring me up in for, or against, or right in the middle, or after everybody else.
I think we could make a note that you are neither testifying for or against.
Okay.
If you're okay with that.
Could I please ask a point of clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Did we really have a, did we really have a clipboard out there that said for the budget and against the budget?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Really?
I'd like to move us on to council response to public comment. Would anybody like to kick us off there? I do have a few responses. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey, for coming and speaking regarding the integral report. As much as I would like to comment on this, I am attempting to honor council consensus to not comment further on this issue, and I know we've stated that before, so thank you again. Mr. Cohn, thank you for your recognition, Manager Keck. Congrats again to our city manager. I appreciate the stroll down memory lane, and I agree that the city has a soft spot in its heart for Inglewood Speedway still to this day. Elaine, thank you for your comments, and I apologize for continuing to butcher your last name. If you don't mind, ma'am, I think I'll go to Elaine rather than attempting to butcher your name moving forward. You know, I do appreciate your comments regarding the budget. You know, I think what Ms. Holtz is talking, Elaine is talking about is total spending and income versus the general fund. And sometimes we talk about the general fund and kind of as an all-inclusive thing, but really, we have a lot of other funds in the city. And I think she's mentioning that total spending is outpacing total income on a comprehensive sort of level. And I would respond that I think that's a relatively healthy sign, that we're able to spend more on capital needs over the last few years than we ever have in the past. We were able to save some money up and build up some balances on a lot of other funds besides our general fund to be able to take care of some of these things. I think that's part of the reason why, even in a relatively strong local economy, you're starting to see that spending outpace the revenues. From a cash flow perspective, we look at things more from the general fund perspective, and I'll reiterate again that 2016 was the first balanced budget in many, many years, I believe, going back to the 1990s. In my opinion, we've resolved this structural, you know, income deficit in the general fund through some of the, you know, fire issues and other restructuring that we've done in the general fund. That doesn't mean that we're out of the woods by any stretch. I think you've heard city management talk about the laundry list of long-term capital needs that we continue to need to address. But I remain hopeful that if we can identify these issues, remain poised, look for other revenue sources, that we'll put ourselves in the best chance to succeed as a community. Mr. Gilbert, I totally agree. I would love to see a different campaign finance report. I was trying to look it up online, but I kinda started talking before I was able to. I think the first reports due October 12th, which is a few days before the ballots go out. However, it is very tight, and I do agree that it would be nice to get some additional exposure to what's happening in our local campaign. So I would certainly be supportive of that, and maybe we could chat a little bit more about how to make that right. Mr. Walker, thank you for your comments. We'll hear a little more from you later. Other comments from council? Councilmember Berentine.
Yes, Doug, thank you. We are always impressed with how innovative Inglewood has been in the past. We hope to continue that tradition in the future. We'll remain to see whether we do or not. I do not know who Mr. Gilbert would contact regarding this, whether it would be the, to do some additional reporting prior to the ballots going out, whether that would be the Election Commission or not, but maybe you could contact the, either the city attorney or the city manager, whoever thinks they have the answer of where you would go to get that answer or have that discussion before it comes to us, I would imagine. I don't know what even would be involved in making that happen, so it'd be interesting to see what it is. And, Mr. Walker, I appreciate you being neither pro nor con, and I guess we should have had a third clipboard out there. And thank you for waiting for the budget public hearing. And as for the budget, I remember that's, since I am an accountant, and it is revenue versus expenses for a specified period of time, not the beginning balance or anything, it's just revenue and expenses for a specified period of time. So I appreciate that remedial lesson back on there. I would take some exception to some of the narrative that's been done around this budgeting process. In February of 2015, our CFO, our Chief Financial Officer at that time, Frank Gregowitz, was in the paper stating that the new city manager had given him some leeway and some freedom to give some additional information on just how much money was being moved around and how upset he was about how the previous city manager and administration had handled that. Unfortunately, by June, he was gone, but in that article, he expressed the concern about the moving of money starting basically around 2006. I happen to, I know I look young, but I happen to have been around prior to 2006, and I still have some of the budget books, and it is not true that the budget was not balanced for the last 15 years. That narrative has just been going around. Since 2006, however, just like the Villager article claimed with our CFO, one period between 2006 and 2015 actually was balanced. And he claims in this article that 2015 itself was going to experience a 2.9, close to $3 million deficit. The state requirement for a budget is that the, that, and this is what we vote on, we do not just vote on a general fund. We vote on all of the funds. That's what the budget has listed as. That's what we vote on. And the state requires that the budget with all funds included be balanced, and that is not been, that's not been happening from what I've seen. So we have some disagreement up here. I've kind of gotten a little concerned with the narrative of, you know, through, for the entire history until our current administration, that we never had a balanced budget. That's just not true. So we need to be careful about how we're painting everything and have some real discussions about some of the issues that I guess will be brought up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from council on... Any further comments from council on response to public comment? Seeing none, I'll move us on to agenda item eight. This is communications, proclamations, and appointments. I entertain a motion on 8A, a proclamation for Sam Ward Day on September 20th, 2017.
Move.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments? I'll be reading this into the record and presenting this after the vote. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. At the record show, seven ice.
Now I'd like to read this proclamation for the record. Sam Ward Day, September 20th, 2017. Whereas on August 22nd, 1967, Sammy Ward sustained a spinal cord injury when an eight-by-10 boulder landed on him while working in Cromo, Colorado, on a construction project. And whereas on September 3rd, 1967, Sammy Ward was airlifted to Craig Rehabilitation Hospital on Colfax Street to begin his rehabilitation. And whereas Sammy Ward established a lifelong relationship with many physicians, nurses, therapists, techs, counselors, housekeepers, food service employees, engineers, and guest service employees and administrators. And whereas Sammy Ward established some of the best friendships with many of Craig patients that have lasted him a lifetime. And whereas Sammy Ward has been returning to Craig Hospital for 50 consecutive years for reevaluations, lunches, dinners, encouragement to patients, and general tomfoolery. And whereas today, Wednesday, September 20th, 2017, all of Craig Hospital and the City of Inglewood, with open arms and hearts, welcome Sammy back to Craig for his 50th reevaluation and more mischief. Now, therefore, I, Joe Jefferson, Mayor of the City of Inglewood, Colorado, hereby proclaim September 20th, 2017, Sammy Ward Day in the City of Inglewood, Colorado. Thank you, everyone. Is, is there anyone here from Craig or from representing Mr. Ward here to receive this proclamation? I know that we will be having an event over at Craig this Wednesday, where I believe we'll be able to actually present this, so I'm looking forward to that. Anyways, welcome to join us. I'd like to move us on now to agenda item nine. This is our consent agenda items. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
Mayor, move. We approve consent agenda items nine, A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and B1.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Discussion on consent agenda items. Councilmember Berantine.
Pull 9B1.
Thank you. We are pulling 9B1 from the consent agenda. Councilmember Russell.
I just have a question about the remaining ones from the Littleton Inglewood wastewater treatment plant, that I would then decide, I mean, if the question could be answered, we could leave them together. Each of the little packets are a little bit different. Is there a reason?
You're welcome to direct that question at this point to city staff. City manager, can you-
Yes, so each, each of these connector agreements, within the addendum, there are some differences in the agreements, mainly due to the fact that specifically, depending upon whether or not that particular district itself has the means and the ability to maintain their portion of their, of their mains that are going to be connected to this, the city's plant here, that dictates that. But each of these addendums also, in some instances, there are subtle nuances that are different from each of the districts. Some of them are more sophisticated than others and have agreed to terms that were more along the lines of the template that you've already adopted, or approved, excuse me, with some of our connectors. So that hopefully explains some of the differences, but I think the biggest difference is mainly, again, the sections relating to what tenants are, are they going to be following? So for example, let me pick out one of these here, Sheridan Sanitation District, for example, they're, they're going to take care of their own mains and everything else. But if you look at here, Cherry Hills, in one instance, they have another entity that takes care of the, takes care of the main.
Okay, that answers my question for the most part. So do we, I mean, we signed a whole lot of connector agreements. Were some of those connector agreements we signed back, I believe in May?
Correct.
Are these, did we sign agreements with these people back in May?
No, the, these, these are different, these are different agreements, primarily, again, because the EPA had gone through the, the process of having the public hearing, waiting, we, we heard back from them positively, and so that's why we brought these forward. So South Gate, Arapahoe, South Arapahoe, those were, those were districts that needed to have an addendum done as well, and we're just making sure that they're all up to date now.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to pull any of them. We can go ahead and leave them together.
I guess it's the same thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine.
So the only ones were, that were already done before were the ones you're making addendums to? And the rest are just coming up during their normal course? Okay.
Correct, that's correct as well.
All right.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on the remaining consent agenda items? This is 9A, 1 through 6. Seeing none, please vote on the remainder of the consent agenda.
All votes have been cast. At the record show, seven ice.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 9B1. This is the Community Development Block Grant Intergovernmental Agreement, Council Bill 49. Staff recommends council approve an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental subgrante agreement for the 2017 Arapahoe County Community Development Block Grant Program between the Arapahoe Board of County Commissioners and the City of Inglewood. Our staff source is senior planner Harold Stitt. I don't know if Mr. Stitt is still in the audience. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind coming forward in case there's any council questions. We will skip staff presentation, since this was consent agenda item, and skip directly to council questions. If any council members have any questions? Seeing, it's Councilmember Berantine.
I pulled it. I'm going to have a question on it, sorry. I didn't, couldn't get to my button fast enough. The, the previous questions that I asked when this came up for his first reading, and that the entire contract wasn't part of this, and in reviewing the information on why it still wasn't matching for me, I realized that actually this is a sub-agreement to the May 4th, 2015 agreement that covers the years from 16 to 18. And in the requirements of this intergovernmental joint cooperation agreement and home consortium between Arapahoe County and the City of Inglewood relating to the conduct of the community development block, block grants and home investment partnership program for grant years 16 through 18, there are sections that I disagree with us just blatantly keep reaffirming and applying to, including what I originally asked about, and that is that we are bound, then, to the affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Act, which has come under a lot of scrutiny, is under a lot of lawsuits right now. And I wish that this had been, when I had requested it before, had been included. I just was able to go ahead and find this back in 2015, and, and the implications of this, and how it's affecting what we're voting on today. So I haven't had a chance to find more problems or issues that I might have with this and how it's affecting what we're doing or how it could affect the rest of our community. And I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion, or, I'm sorry, do we have a motion on 9B1? I'd entertain a motion, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this issue? Councilmember Berantine, did you have further discussion on this issue?
I would like to go ahead and give the agreement for the 2015 May 4th agreement that obviously is kind of the overlord of this to the city attorney and make sure that she has an opportunity to look at this. Regardless of what the vote goes down, I think that we need to take a very serious look at what we're agreeing to do when we get this money, and I certainly don't want to end up in the situation like a lot of communities and counties have. So I will forward that on to you.
Thank you. I'll be supportive of this, you know, thank you to staff for putting this together. I, you know, I know that there are some concerns about what strings might kind of come with this, but we really do have tremendous need here in our community for these type of fundings. The E3 program that a lot of these proceeds are going towards really help make a difference in energy efficiencies in our community, and I think it's a great program and is only possible through these type of funds. So thank you again. Councilmember Russell.
I also will not be supporting this because I do have some concerns that we could be putting the city at risk by doing this. And the things that I talked about the last time about the figures on the financial implications back from the chart, they didn't get moved forward. And actually, from the figures that the city manager mentioned last week, that the staff, it was like, I don't know, 50, I was going to say 56,000 for staff time, and that is a lot of money. So anyway, I will be noting, voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the council?
I had-
Did you have another comment, Councilmember Berantine?
Yeah, just really quick, I forgot to bring up about the budget as well. I was a little concerned that the, the city manager did make it quite clear that it was somewhere around 50,000 in staff time, and you still have on here that you're only anticipating utilizing a portion of the funds that you have available to you. You have available to you to cover what you told them your staff would cost, which is The county is allowing you $14,600, which is half. The remainder of that, I imagine, is our portion that would go to them. Why we would, why we would go ahead and not take advantage of the other 10,000 and some change is beyond me when it's available for that purpose, so that you can do a very long laundry list of record-keeping and monitoring. So I was disappointed that that wasn't addressed when we brought that up. Nothing on this has changed, and we, I kind of got the impression that we were going to look at recouping some of, more of the costs that are readily available to us. It's not, it's not wrong for us to take the full amount that the county is doing, so I was a little surprised that wasn't addressed.
Thank you. Manager Kek, I think-
Yeah, Mayor and council, that certainly is your prerogative to give direction to the staff. And this particular issue, and for years, the, the direction had been for the city to subsidize that with our staff time to ensure that our less affluent and needy residents received as much funding as possible to, to utilize this funding for, for those particular programs that we sponsor. And so that's why that particular ethos has been taken to, again, promulgate more dollars into the community and subsidize it through that way.
Thank you. I'm certainly supportive of maximizing the administrative cost. I, you know, it was under the assumption that this wasn't necessarily the mechanism that locked us into what we're asking for on the administrative side, but if it is, then I would support an amendment to go after all the administrative dollars that are offered through this program. Would this require a motion, city attorney? Thank you. While you're looking at that, I'll move on to Councilmember Olson and come back to you, ma'am.
Do we ask Director Stitt why we haven't been asking for all of it again?
The amount of money that was mentioned last, at the last council meeting, actually covers all of the block grant work that, that it happens within community development. That is not all for the EQ program. The EQ program is a very small percentage of that. That, that 50-plus-thousand-dollar figure covers the administration of the loans, the loans that we have, the ones that we gave out through the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Program over the last 30, 35, 37 years. That's the larger portion of expenditure, that's the staff time. We've made a conscious decision since we began the EQ project to limit the amount of money that we would take in administration so that we would have more available to help the community.
So basically, what we're doing is we've made a decision to use our staff in this way because we've, we've committed them to this particular issue of affordability and making sure that people are in homes, just sort of our social service in some ways. Many cities have their own human services department that are larger than us, but this is maybe one aspect of ours. Is that how you think of it, then?
We wanted to make more money available for, for the grant program, for the community.
And instead, we, yeah, and as a result, we take less for the administrative, and we put our money up for that.
Correct.
Ourselves, yeah. Thank you, that's what I thought.
Thank you. Before I move on to council, further council comments, I want to turn it back over to city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, the ordinance that's being adopted is to adopt the underlying agreement, so we would have to, the city council would have to go back and amend the underlying agreement prior to adopting this ordinance.
Thank you. And that amendment would be to amend the administrative line to the maximum of 14, what is it?
14,600.
14,600.
It's already there.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of this program. I'm really grateful that we are awarded these grant monies. I was speaking to a resident this weekend who took advantage of this program and just had nothing but great things to say about it, and it provides a really nice benefit to our residents. So I am very supportive, and, and thank you for you and your team and the work that you do on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I, I too am supportive of the, of this program, the way it is presented to us tonight, and I appreciate that staff's not trying, trying to take all the money so that it can go to the people who actually need it, and I think that's the whole purpose of this project, is to help those who need the money. And I'm glad that you're not, you're just taking what you need and giving the rest back to the public, so I'd like to move it on as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I would also state that I'd prefer more money going out to helping individuals, and I would like to go ahead and leave it as is and move it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
The concern is, is that for only $115,000, not, not that we're helping people, it's nice that we're helping people, but for that 115,000, we may be obligating the entire community and their zoning and their land use, because we've made agreements with HUD and the feds, and for a lousy 115,000, we may cause ourselves a lot of other problems. That's the bigger issue. On the money of us recouping, in the application that you provided, you told them that it would cost to administer the E3 program 37,644, not 50,000, and that the county is giving you 14,600. So we don't need to amend anything, that's what the contract already says, is that they are giving us 14,600. My question came when, in the narrative of this, under the financial implications, the city just kind of on their own said, we're only estimating and taking 4,000 instead of all of what we supplied in the agreement that we gave to the county. So the money is already available, we don't need to do anything else with that, it's already part of the contract. Whether we take it or not, I guess is a decision that the city is making somewhat arbitrarily in there, and my concern is never, I always want to make sure that we help the people in need in this community. My concern is that by taking these funds, we are obligating the entire community to different land use and zoning issues that I want, that we're going to explore later.
City attorney, do you want to weigh in again?
Yes. Councilmember Berantine is correct that it's written one, it's written in two different ways. The agreement itself says that the city can take however much. The city's stated on its supporting paperwork that it only intends to take however much it intends to take. So the two are in conflict, and what I'm hearing three members of council say is that while the two documents appear to be in conflict, that they would direct staff to go with the full amount proposed under the contract, and I'm hearing four members state that they prefer to go with the number in the document that the city has said it would follow in following the contract. I think that's an underlying conflict at this point. If, if the, if the vote is approved at this point, staff is, is being directed to follow the supporting documentation which is presented to council.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this issue? Anybody want to deal with that 14,600 on a motion? Councilmember Russell?
I believe that it would be wise to adjust the supporting document.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes, sir.
If she's going to vote no anyway, why would she add an amendment?
I didn't add an amendment, I just was making a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think an amendment here is unreasonable, you know? Let's give her the floor, if she wants to make an amendment, she can. If she wants to simply make a comment, I think she can, and we can go back to the underlying motion here. I'm, if she's not going to, I'm going to make a motion, just FYI. Yeah. Again, I'll be motioning to amend, to take the 14,600, the full administrative cost of the program that's allowable under the contract.
Second.
Thank you. You know, I think, you know, my rationale here is that, you know, I think up until we started taking a look at, from a programmatic approach, I'm not sure we were ever really able to accurately quantify staff time and the true cost of doing business on some of these programs. Now that we're able to justify that expenditure and expense, I think it's very reasonable for us to offset that cost by taking those proceeds that are available through this program. We're still spending well above and beyond that in administration of this program, in my opinion, so again, I'll be supporting this motion. Councilmember Yates, we're speaking on this motion only.
This question is for city attorney-
This question is for City Attorney. If we do not amend this document, what we're saying is we're subsidizing fourteen thousand dollars approximately. And that money goes into the administration end of it. And then the block grant, we have more dollars to give to the community. That's correct. If we amend it, then what we're doing is we're taking that fourteen thousand dollars that we normally send out to the community and throw it into administrative costs. So we're cutting basically the amount of money to the community by fourteen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is the ordinance remains the same. The underlying motion that Councilmember Gillett stated was to approve the ordinance. So the underlying motion is the same. Should the ordinance be approved, that accepts the sub-agreement. The sub-agreement is presented with an opportunity for the city to take as much, I think, as fourteen thousand dollars or some number for administrative fees. But the staff has presented that they are interpreting that agreement to only require them to take four thousand. So the amendment is going back to the staff's interpretation of the contract. And basically, the amendment is telling staff, interpret the contract to take the full fourteen thousand instead of the presentation as it currently stands. So you're not actually changing the agreement, you're changing the staff's interpretation of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I would agree with what the mayor has proposed on this because not only do we seem to have an inaccurate number that was given in this original proposal to the county, we've been told that this is well over fifty thousand dollars. That's another thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars that we're subsidizing this. And we have to give some respect to the taxpayers in this community that are subsidizing this program. If it's... We have to give some respect to not doubling up the amount of portion that the city is providing. No program, no grant program when it's provided. And we're presenting it to the public that we're going to do it at any cost. And we keep raising this now, another thirteen thousand dollars that we've been made aware of during this process, that it actually costs us. And I think that we need to be responsible when we take these grants to not overburden our staff or the taxpayers and what we're doing. It has to come from somewhere. So I believe that since the county, in working with us, makes this formula and that they believe that this is a fair distribution and that we're already giving a portion, that means that we would be giving thirty thousand dollars, over thirty thousand dollars, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to go ahead and do a program for a hundred and fifteen. And maybe there are better ways we can do it if people are made aware that it's at this cost. And maybe there are better ways to do it than this if we're going to be putting that kind of expenditure into just doing a grant. So I would vote for the, taking the full amount of at least the fourteen-six, certainly not taking the full amount of the thirty-five thousand that it costs us.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Would you agree that that's an accurate picture of it, in terms of the balance sheet of it?
I'm not sure I understand the underlying numbers from the contract fully. In fact, that is, those are numbers that were put together by Arapahoe County as a requirement of the HUD funding scheme. The fourteen thousand, that's roughly 10% of the grant amount in round numbers. And the amount of money that we can claim for administrative purposes is based on documented time that we spend administering the program. It's not simply a matter of writing a report to the county and indicating that we've expended fourteen thousand dollars' worth of administrative time without backup to prove that. So whether we can, in fact, have fourteen thousand dollars' worth of administrative time, we'll see this year if the grant is approved by council tonight.
So let me say this. Is this what you're saying, then, that it may not cost us fourteen thousand dollars to administer this grant? It may only cost us four thousand, and that's what you would prefer to have in order to give more to the public?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'll be voting yes on this. Or not, I guess, we're talking about amendment now, no on the amendment.
You'll be voting no on the amendment. Yeah, real quick, I would like to get some clarity on that. Manager Keck, do you have enough information to substantiate all of our administrative costs of this, or no?
Yes, sir, we do. Again, through our work with priority-based budgeting, we've figured out every FTE and what they're working upon. And that particular data, as Mr. Stitt has mentioned, as he's broken it out, I looked at two of those program areas where they've been broken out in aggregate. One was ten thousand and the other one was forty-four and some change. As he's enunciated, that's accurate. I don't, you know, I didn't know exactly what those programs are, but he's more aware of what that is. And the smaller program is for this EQ program that he's discussing this evening.
Okay. So we may have a non-issue here. We may be splitting hairs here. I think perhaps what the effect of this amendment will simply be is just maximize whatever our true costs are, up to the maximum. Is that fair?
Sir.
Thank you. Any further comments on this amendment, Councilmember Berentone?
Well, my question would be similar to yours. That's not the discussion we had last time about the same document. And I think we all know what we're talking about is a document that we submit to the county and we filled out. And the thirty-seven thousand is in there. And when we asked last time, we were told that it was fifty. And now you're saying that maybe you won't even make the four thousand. So maybe you should amend it and just to make sure that we recoup the costs. And I hope that we have a program so that we all come to an agreement of what it's actually costing us, because that's a forty-six thousand dollar difference. So it would be important to know.
Thank you. Before I move to Councilmember Martinez, I will clarify my motion and ask the second to clarify that. And that is simply to maximize the administrative cost up to our actual cost up to the maximum of the contract. And who made the second, I believe it was Councilmember Russell?
I did.
Thank you. So we are amending this motion here. Councilmember Martinez?
I will not be supporting the amendment. I prefer to support Council Bill 49 as presented.
Thank you. No further comments. Councilmember Berentone, one last comment?
What if the expenses don't come up to four thousand? I mean, now we don't have really, I'm not comfortable with any number that's been given. And it is a possibility that four thousand may be actually more than what we spend on the administration of this. So I think we actually would do the grant a favor by actually having it be the actual cost, as they may be less than four thousand.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So would you agree that leaving it open is a better way to go at it? I mean, we've done this before. You have to put an exact amount in?
No.
Is the county requiring?
The way the contract is structured, in my understanding at least, is that that's the maximum amount that the city can draw down for administrative costs. It's not, it doesn't say you have to. It's the maximum amount. It's a percentage of the total grant. And that's a federal requirement.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say, I think Mr. Stitt is more familiar with the hours that it takes to run this program than any of us. So if you recommend as it is originally, which is what I support, then that's what I'm going to support.
Thank you. No further comments on this motion. Again, this motion is an amendment to take the actual and full administrative cost up to the maximum of the contract of fourteen thousand, six hundred. Please vote on that amendment.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Three ayes and four nays.
Thank you.
Nays being Councilmember Olson, Yates, Martinez, and Gillett.
Thank you. Move us back to the underlying motion to approve Council Bill 49 as presented. Any further comments on Council Bill 49? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Five ayes and two nays. The two nays being Councilmember Russell and Member Berentone.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 10.
This will be held for the Inglewood citizens.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Public, Agenda Item 10. This is our public hearing items tonight. We do have a public hearing on the proposed 2018 budget. Staff is recommending conducting a public hearing to obtain comments and concerns from the community regarding the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. Prior to considering an ordinance for adoption of the budget on October 2nd, 2017, I'd like to entertain a motion to open this public hearing. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson, I'm giving that to you here. And please vote on the opening of the public hearing.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Seven ayes. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Eric Keck, city manager, live here in Inglewood on South Galapagos Street. I also want to indicate this evening to the city council and to the community that this particular budget item in this public hearing has been published three times within a paper of general circulation. That would be the Inglewood Herald. And here is the proof of publication. So thank you, Mayor and council, for making this particular budget preparation year the most robust and transparent budget process in recent history of the city. I really need to applaud the council for starting this process. I know it was arduous. It was very long. Actually started in March of this year. And due to council's due diligence and blessing, for the first time in, I think, in maybe the history of the city, you had one of the most robust means of getting out into the community as well to try to glean information. And we obtained successful and meaningful feedback, we believe, from the community as part of those workshops. Most importantly, I believe that this particular budget reflects the values and priorities of the community, as well as the epitome of the definition of what a budget is. So if we look at what a budget is, it's actually the collective conscience of the community. It represents where you want to put your funds and what results that you expect. And clearly, this goal has been achieved through the prioritization of the community's goals through this budget process. As a matter of fact, in this particular budget, in the 2018 budget, we're going to be bolstering the priority results of the community dealing with health and safety, good governance, reliable infrastructure, sustainable natural environment, and lifelong learning, education, recreational opportunities in this 2018 budget. So council, you should be applauded for that particular work. Let's talk about the process a little bit. The budget process itself, as we previously enunciated, began in March. And it was a very methodical, very intentional process of studying each and every department. I know much has been made in the run-up to this particular meeting about how, you know, you wanted to hear from each department. And we believe very firmly that that actually has been accomplished, first and foremost, by departments coming and giving a presentation that talked about specifically what each of those departments did, what their cost drivers were, what their challenges were, as well as what their opportunities. So that kind of set the stage and gave you a foundational concept of what each department does and, again, what drives them. We're very proud of this particular process this year, again, because we believe that it has been allowed for the council to actually get in and utilize many of the same tools that we utilize to create the budget. Specifically, through the implementation of the open Inglewood Financial Portal, you've been able to have line item data, not only for previous years, but for this proposed budget. So you've been able to see that. We've given you the tools related to the online priority-based-budgeting.net, which allows you to actually get in and actually see the programs, each and every program that the city has. When we first undertook the priority-based budgeting methodology, we had nine-hundred-something programs. Now we're down to a little bit under seven-hundred. Still a lot of programs and services that the city provides. However, we now have the optics or the lens by which to look at each and every one of these programs and understand specifically what it costs to provide the service, but also how many employees, full-time equivalent employee units are assigned to that. And that's what's allowed us to kind of drill down and understand, how are we performing? Where are you putting your funds? Where are you putting your attention? And so that's extremely important as well. So as part of this process as well, we took an opportunity to look at some of the base assumptions that council had. You gave us some assumptions earlier this year, if you recall, or agreed to some assumptions with respect to revenue growth, how much revenue growth we could expect to see, as well as expense caps. How much expense did you want to see, you know, us to look at? One of the biggest cost drivers, and we're not going to apologize to this, is the fact that we're a service organization. That's our personnel. Personnel costs in cities are going to be a preponderance of the city's budget. And that's just the way things work in a municipal environment. We also, back during that time earlier this year, had and heard very clearly the direction to ensure that we provide the same level of service that we provide today. You didn't want to see any diminishment of any services that were provided. That's a tall task. It's a tall order, council, in this particular environment. But we were able to do that. So the entire month of June was spent in community outreach. And many of you actually attended some of our budget workshops and were able to hear from the public. And we heard from a hundred different and new voices that we hadn't actually heard from before. Over a hundred people came. For our first shot out of the gate, trying to do public engagement on a budget, which is not something that people say, "Man, I wake up this morning, I'm going to go to this budget workshop." Because it's difficult. We recognize that people are busy. We tried to meet them where they were, out in the community, instead of having them come here to the ivory tower and listen to budget lectures. But hopefully, the people that did attend found that meaningful. The feedback that we received indicated that it was. And we're going to continue to do that in the future and refine that process of enhancing public engagement in the budget process. Staff then spent the better part of July and early August on aggregating information predicated upon not only the city council's ground rules, the natural occurrence of looking and analyzing cost and programs, looking at revenues, but also taking into account the feedback received from the public to help create the budget. Again, then in August, council had some workshops. And, you know, we can talk about those in a second. But like any budget process, the fiscal year 18 budget process was difficult. The focus, however, was on alignment with our community results. And specifically, we have those eight result areas. The first one, obviously, is very, very important to many of you and should be. It's good governance. And that is, what are we doing to enhance good governance? That's the ensuring that we're doing things transparently, appropriately, and involving and engaging the public as best that we can. The second community result that we sought alignment for was to create an attractive, engaged, inclusive, and welcoming community. And that, again, we spent time looking at our programs and made sure they were in alignment with that result. Third, we looked at effective mobility and reliable infrastructure. That covers everything from roads to wastewater to any of other infrastructure, including our buildings, and ensuring that they were dealt with in an appropriate fashion. And as you'll hear in a little bit, our capital project, our capital improvement program for 2018 is predicated upon two main hallmarks. Number one, infrastructure enhancement and ensuring that we're reinvigorating the life and enhancing the lifespan of those investments that we already own. And secondarily, ensuring that the infrastructure has been done and is dealt with to enhance public safety. And those are the main goals that drove that. And that, of course, impacts that third result, community result or community goal of effective and reliable infrastructure. Fourth, we're always looking towards orderly and well-managed development and growth. As just discussed in the study session tonight, council is looking at land use issues. But aside from looking at the planning for new land use and new ways in which to do business, such as providing with accessory dwelling units, we looked at, again, ensuring that the day-to-day transactions that transpire are done in a way in which do create that well-managed and orderly development. And that's dealing with the contracting community homeowners who are doing small projects. And so our budget is aligned with ensuring that we have the appropriate level of customer service in those areas. Number five, our community is very proud of the fact that we have some of the best recreation and park components in the metro area. And so our budget, again, looks to enhance the recreation, cultural, and lifelong learning opportunities that our public and community has come to know and expect. Six, safe and healthy community. Many people have already tried to enunciate that our eight community goals are not prioritized in any such fashion, but they believe that safety and health should be number one. Not that we disagree with that. The way in which the priority-based budgeting methodology works is that everything has equal weight. And it is up to the city council and up to the collective conscious of the community to decide how those dollars are spent. And again, we're very pleased and proud of the work that the city council has done within this particular budget process, including through the public, the actual workshops you had in August, to add three officers to the police department. That's only one aspect of safe and healthy communities, by the way. But we know that's a very important one, again, with the growth that's transpired in the community, as well as the need to ensure that we have adequate officers to respond to those concerns. So we're pleased and proud of that. Next is sustainable natural environment. This is something that is very keen and very important to our community and our residents as well. One of our budget workshops, we heard very clearly from many citizens who attended at Charles A. Elementary School, that we need to do... Charles A. Elementary School, that we need to do more with respect to safe and healthy natural environment here in Inglewood. Inglewood has a great history of dealing with this particular matter in an appropriate fashion, however, people want to see us do more and go further yet with respect to ensuring that we have sustainable natural environment, more energy efficiency measures, reducing our greenhouse gas, and we've had workshops on this. We have included funding in the budget, as directed by the City Council, to address some of these things, albeit, the vote has not transpired yet, I will say that Council has been supportive of the biogas project at the wastewater treatment plant. And Ms. Holtz is correct, tonight, we're not just talking about the general fund, we're talking about the all funds that the city has, and that's one of them, is an enterprise for our wastewater treatment plant. Lastly, we are obviously concerned with looking at a thriving and vibrant local economy, and that's one of the goals that we have as well. One of the challenges that the city of Inglewood has, unlike many communities throughout this country, but specifically here in Colorado, is ensuring that we have a thriving and vibrant local economy that provides the community with businesses and services that they need, while at the same time, the city is gaining wealth and, you know, the economic growth that's occurring is being positive for the community. And we have set aside funds, obviously, to assist with this as well, as well as the customer service necessary, I think, to support the business community. So, again, we're very, very pleased with this. So with this budget process, again, it was very collaborative amongst the departments. Let me just say this, when I first arrived here, I found departments that were disparate, that were siloed, there wasn't much communication amongst each other, there was cooperation where needed and necessary, but I will tell you that I am extremely proud of the work that the department directors have done in this particular fiscal year, prepared for this budget, to sit down and say, "You know what? This is not a zero-sum game where my department wins and your department loses," as we've done in the past with the previous budgeting methodology. Specifically, you know me, I'm very blunt, I'll tell you, the way things happened in the past was, police department won, parks lost, or public works lost and parks won. We're not doing that anymore. We're becoming more laser-like focused on ensuring that every department works together collaboratively to ensure that, again, we're meeting the eight community goals, but also working together across departmental lines to ensure how we can help one another achieve those goals. Excuse me. In this particular budget process, I was very proud of the fact that our department directors got together and they came to agreement on how we were going to achieve a structurally balanced budget. Much has been made tonight about balanced budget, and Councilperson Barantin is correct, you've had a budget that's been balanced in the past. What's changed is the structural balance, and that's exactly what we've done, and that means that we're not playing the games anymore, and I shouldn't say games, it's not an appropriate thing to say maybe at this particular meeting. The way that budgeting's been done in the past, I will say, is they've done what they had to do to get a balanced budget. We are now more concerned with ensuring that when we have a structurally balanced budget, that we are ensuring, again, that we're not pushing costs out to different funds and bringing revenues in to balance, we are spending from reserves, and that's not inappropriate. That is an appropriate function and fashion of doing a budget, and this budget's no different. So, we made some difficult choices, Council, to get this, to balance this budget. Difficult choices had to be made, we respected that, we respected that process and understood that going in. There are some programs and some services that we're not going to provide anymore, there are some personnel allocations that we're not going to utilize anymore, and that's going to have an impact on us internally, and we recognize that, that we're going to have to do additional work. Specifically, here before, we've had a budget analyst position that has been extremely helpful in providing us with intelligence on being able to move forward with functions such as, you know, helping departments understand how to see where their trends are with budgets, kind of do some projection forward, but our finance director has stated that she is willing to do some of that work herself, and so she's taken on the additional work. That's a sacrifice. In the City Manager's Office, we eliminated two positions. We had a part-time department assistant position, which has been, kind of the need for it's been obviated by some additional security measures. We know that we've addressed some security in the building, and that person played the greeter role, but also some security. We don't have that role anymore, but that's put additional pressure on our personnel inside now to ensure that we're able to meet the needs of not only the City Council, I'm kind of a, not an old-school manager or leader, I try to do my own correspondence, I don't dictate things, I type my own stuff, but that's great, but we're all stepping up and meeting the needs that are there now that we've made some changes. In other areas, you know, we've had to make some changes by tightening up the budget with respect to our expenditures on things for goods and services, commodities, professional services has been analyzed very closely. We're trying to eliminate consultants as much as possible and rely on our in-house knowledge, because we've had the ability to attract some great employees and retain those who have that knowledge, and we're going to bank on them and help utilize them to get our work done here in the future. It's not to say that we're not going to use professional services in the future, but we've made a lot of headway there. So the resultant budget product was agreed upon unanimously by all the directors, who previously stated, as previously stated, and they collaborated to complete that budget document. As I enunciated earlier too, again, the Council was provided with more budgeting tools than ever before, and the Council and community were provided with the program descriptions for our top programs, and so you only saw the tip of the iceberg this year with respect to our programs and descriptions. We do expect in future budget years that we'll have a page for each program and service, so you'll be able to see cost of that program, a description of the program and service provided, as well as the number of FTEs assigned to it. That is a lot of work to do with the number of programs we have, but we, again, went through and at high level addressed some of the more pressing and important programs to you as a community and use the Council. As stated, the Council had two budget workshops in August, and it was during these budget workshops that I'm very proud of you. You worked together and you came to consensus on making some minor changes to the budget to, again, afford for the city to put forward another police officer, by trading, you know, trading out a proposed street operator to work, a street sweeper. So this is going to allow for enhancement, again, to safe and healthy community, which I think is fantastic. We also worked diligently to address every Council request and question that was raised with the budget. I believe you got a humongous packet on Friday. We worked diligently and stayed late to make sure that you got all that information, and so hopefully, that information was meaningful and useful to your understanding as well with the budget. Let's briefly touch on the budget document. The budget document that's before you, the budget book, as well as what was online, was created in a structurally balanced fashion, as I already enunciated, and is in conformance with Article 10 of the city's charter, and its prescriptions for the preparation of this budget. Matter of fact, in many instances, we exceed that. In certain instances, the charter only requires two years, we've given you many more years of looking back, as well as looking forward with our projects. The budget is also in conformance with the Government Accounting Standards Board and their strict standards for fiscal governance, as well as the budget meets the best practices of the Government Finance Officers Association, and we expect fully to receive another year, again, in a row, I can't remember how many years we're up to, Jenny, what, 16, 17 years? 16 years of distinguished budget presentation, and that's meaningful. That's not us beating our chests and saying we've done something well, that's another organization who deals with budgets saying that we've done something well. Budgeting is a difficult process, there's no doubt about it, but it's a process that can be even more difficult to understand in the public realm, and we get that. We use modified accrual accounting, and not a lot of people do modified accrual accounting. We don't create a P and L. However, what we do create are hopefully, in this particular budget year, again, a more meaningful and easy way for people to understand the budget, and that is, again, through the programs and services that we provide, and specifically, again, manifesting for the third year in a row, a structurally balanced budget with no diminished levels of service for this community. Again, this year, we address capital projects in a more meaningful way as well, by, again, looking at two, those two guiding methods of, you know, ensuring what project we're going to do, building sustainability, asset reinvigoration for those assets that we already have, as well as extending the life and looking at public safety, and so this year's capital improvement project list should contain all those. Looking forward, Council, staff's been really pleased with the results of this particular budget process this year. It has been long and difficult, but we believe very firmly that the concerted and intentional plan for addressing the long-term fiscal strategy of the city that you've all agreed to do is going to be an incredible process. So how are we going to deal with that? Beginning with the seating of the new Council in November, I believe it's November 16th, we fully anticipate sitting down with that Council and then putting together a strategic plan. That's one of the elements that's missing from this community. We have an internal strategic plan that deals with operations of the city, but it doesn't look and hasn't involved the City Council from an operational, from a, excuse me, strategic policy level. We need the strategic policy. Difficult choices have to be made in the future. Those difficult choices are going to relate to things that the community has come to know and expect, but we're not going to be able to continue to provide all the services that we are with our reliance just only on sales tax growth. We know that sales tax is cyclical, sales tax is fickle, and sales tax could be very harmful for us. We've been very fortunate this year to have seen significant sales tax growth, and I'm happy to report, again, we had another outstanding month this past month, you're going to get that financial report, I believe, next week? I think it's next week's agenda, that study session. So you'll hear how we did last month, but we can't continue to rely just on that. Our property tax is a tiny minute part of our budget, I think that's lost on many residents, and I get the fact that they feel like their overall tax burden is tremendous, try living in another state that has higher taxes, I'll say that, but, again, our property tax this year was like 3.3 million, we expect to bring in 3.5 million, of an overall $47 million budget. That's a small number, so we're relying on a lot of sales tax, we're relying on a lot of intergovernmental funds from state and federal government, as well as, excuse me, grants and other funds. So it's vitally important that part of your strategic plan that you're going to undertake here in November, as well as as soon as we can get some time scheduled in 2018, to look at the sustainability of not only the operational piece of the community, that's the services that we provide on a daily basis, but also the critical infrastructure that we have, the roads, the buildings. And I think, Council, that we need to clear the air on something else, and that is, Inglewood is not the only community that is struggling with infrastructure, trying to figure out how to fund all of its buildings, and how to fund all of its roads. As I talk to my peers and colleagues in other communities, as well as have done significant research with respect to where the state of infrastructure is in this country, we've got a big problem, and I think that's been lost, but I will say this, for all the invective that's come up about the city and its ability to finance or not finance or understand financing, I think the city has done well to maintain the infrastructure that it has, should be proud of that. We can do better and we can do more in this particular process that we're going to undertake with you in 2018 to address future budgets and build upon the work that you've already started, is going to be vitally important. You know, we must not be afraid of this process or the future, specifically, we need to embrace the change necessary to ensure a sustainable future, and that is going to mean having some difficult conversations about what we can afford and what we can't anymore in the future going forward, and that means also looking at all of our revenue sources and expenses as well. It's not a one-sided equation. It's not a one-sided equation where you can ask me and say, "Start cutting our way to prosperity," because that's not going to happen. It's probably going to require some additional revenues, and as part of this fiscal year 18 budget, we are proposing some new revenues that relate to ensuring, through time and motion studies, and ensuring that our cost providing services, we're actually covering those for building permits, public works right-of-way permits, fees that we charge for recreation programs outside residents that utilize our facilities, we're going to make sure that we actually try to recover more of those costs. I've set some goals from our department directors with that as well. It's not to nickel-and-dime our residents to death, but it also is to ensure, though, that we are recovering a higher percentage of the cost that it means to provide services. As stated, the work that has already started with the dialogue this year on Council is going to be helpful in creation of the Sustainable Future Plan that we're going to be looking at doing. So what are we here for tonight? Tonight's hearing is not about process improvement, about what we could have done better, you know, with this budget year's process, it's to hear the residents. There's been ample time for process improvement discussion throughout this particular budget season that we've had, and it seems like every month is budget season, but we've been spending significant time there, but tonight's to hear from the citizenry and then have Council provide direction on any changes that might emanate from this testimony that we're going to hear this evening. The charter will be followed with all the next steps, including the certification of the tax levy, as well as the requisite appropriation ordinances for each and every one of the funds that are going to be, need to be put into place. So tonight, again, Council, I want to thank you for the budget process. I think that the leadership that you exercised in the preparation of the budget was very positive, and I look forward to that continued positive experience as we plan for our community's fiscal future. At that, I'll be quiet now so that you can hear from the public.
Thank you. You know, I would like to ask, Council, any opportunity for questions here at this time? Please, you know, do honor that this is a question period, and please don't try to interject your testimony into the public hearing, but if there are any questions from Manager Keck, we can hear those now. I had a quick question regarding the programs. You mentioned early on 900 to 700 programs in your testimony there, can you highlight that and how you were able to go from nine to seven?
Yes, sir. It's not dissimilar, this is the second community that I've been able to implement Priority-Based Budgeting methodology. It's not unusual for when a community first undertakes this process, you write down everything that you do. Now, there are some ground rules by which we look at for the creation of a program. We have to ask ourselves, is it too small, or is it too large, is there too many things rolled up into it? But it's not unusual for communities to start with programs. In Idaho, I had 1,000 programs, and then over a two-year period, we reduced it down to about 700. So here in Inglewood, the same thing happened. We had programs that were undertaken, that we called a program, that really wasn't a program, it was too small, or we had too many things rolled up into it. So we've done that process, have gone back through in 2000, from 17 to 18's budget, and rolled up some programs into a larger umbrella, if you will, to undertake that. So that's where that difference is.
Thank you. Any further questions from Council? Councilor Barantin.
In the past, most of the budgets have included the FTEs, and I know that you gave this document to us later, and I just wanted to clarify, what is a PT and B?
Part-time, non-benefited.
Okay, and so from 2012 to 2017, we've had an increase of 328 employees? Is this correct?
I'd have to take a look at that chart, ma'am, I've got a stack of paper that's tremendous here. I'm happy to answer those questions, but I'd need to refer to that particular table.
This is, here you go.
The one you sent us in the email.
Gotcha.
Usually those numbers have been included in the budget, and so I just wanted to make sure that it was correct, and we've increased since 2012 by 328 employees.
Mind, Councilor, that is part-time, non-benefited, and seasonals, so we have added a lot of seasonals. Seasonals have been added for a number of reasons. They do help us contain our cost, they help us to provide key services during certain seasons, so not all those persons are part-time, you know, non-benefited. We do have part-time, non-benefited employees in Parks and Recreation and in the library, but a preponderance of those employees are seasonal, Pirates Cove, our park system, we do hire seasonals for public works as well as in the utilities as well.
And are any of the contractual employees included in this?
We did not indicate contractual employees. I recognize that that's been a concern that's been raised in the past, but a contract's a contract, and contract employees for us, for example, we have any given day 24 fire, you know, employees assigned to us, didn't include those.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, the, okay, so then just in the last three years, or from last year, we've increased just the full-time and part-time employees, and that doesn't include, so we're at 425, and that's without, getting rid of the fire department, we're only showing a couple, like, we're showing, we're only showing 425 maybe, and we only had 438 or 460, so I'm not, I was just trying to get the difference in getting both the IT department and the contractual and the fire department, that actually, we don't seem to have gone down by the 60, 70 employees that we did, I thought, when we got rid of the fire department.
We had 52 full-time employees with the fire department when we had it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
52 full-time employees with Inglewood Fire Department?
So then we've actually increased from last year to this year by over 25 employees?
That is.
Just full-time and part-time?
Full-time and part-time, yes. So the increase was due largely to staffing strategies within our Parks and Recreation Department. Historically, you know, the turnover in seasonal employees negatively impacted our ability to create efficiencies, and so we went with more, you know, again, this concerted effort to hire more seasonal employees instead of having to bring on, because what was happening is the part-time positions, we doubled the part-time positions and reduced the hours required of each individual, so this strategy actually has been better for the city economically. this strategy actually has been better for the city economically.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Keck. I'll move us on to the public hearing roster. We did have three sign-ups. The sign-ups were favoring the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget, and those opposing. We had nobody sign up for the favoring. We did have Mr. Jerry Walker, who wished to be part of the public hearing, and he wished to be noted as a neutral party, and we did have three parties signed up opposing. So I would like to-
Mr. May, before you go there, I apologize. As part of the ordinance that created your Budget Advisory Committee, they are actually also required to present to the council. And at this point in time, if it would please the council, I would like to call up the chairperson, Christine Magrady, to present to you before you take testimony.
That'd be fine.
Thank you, sir.
And then we'll start with neutral speakers and move on to opposing speakers. Good evening, Mrs. Magrady.
Can you raise your hand, please? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Christine Magrady, 3775 South Grant Street. And just a quick correction, I'm actually not the chair this year, but I am doing the presentation. So again, I want to start by congratulating the city manager on the nomination for that award. I think he has done a tremendous amount of work, as has council and city staff, on this performance-based budgeting initiative. And we on the Budget Advisory Committee have been watching that process unfold with great interest, and we're, we're enjoying watching that process. I also want to echo the word robust for the budget process that the city has gone through this year. It's, it's been a great process, and I think it's really added a lot of value. I want to thank the council for extending our charter. The Budget Advisory Committee initially was created with a three-year term limit, and at this point, we have been made a permanent committee. So we appreciate the opportunity to continue doing the work that we're doing, and we appreciate that support from council. Council received our report, I think, probably two weeks ago, so I'm going to go through some highlights, and then we can take any questions. But I do just want to note that, that I think this report went out on the 20, the 31st of August. So the report did go out before the committee had an opportunity to review the budget. So let me apologize in advance if we kind of missed some important pieces. I want to acknowledge Harvey Pratt, who was our initial chair and served on the committee for five years. He has left us, and we really appreciate his service. I want to welcome, we have a couple new members, Julia Kuyt and Suzanne Dirksen. We're really excited to have some new ideas and new energy on the committee, so we're looking forward to working with them, and we thank council for sending them our way. I want to echo that we on the Budget Advisory Committee have been very interested in the, in the police issue, and we're very pleased to see three new officers proposed in this budget. We also have spent a lot of time over the past couple of years talking about bond initiatives and infrastructure, and so we just want to give a shout out to the new police building that happened through the, the process last year, through the citizens supporting that initiative, and we're very excited to see the police building happening. So we've heard the word structurally balanced a lot here tonight, and I want to talk about going forward. There is a projected, we're calling it the fiscal cliff, right? In 2019, the, the projections show that there's going to be an imbalance in the budget, a structural deficit in the budget of, I think it's about a million dollars. So our expenditures are going to outpace our revenue by a million dollars. And that projection is based on a fairly positive look at sales tax. So the million dollars could grow if the sales tax climate does not continue to be as favorable. We on the Budget Advisory Committee are very concerned about this fiscal cliff. We have for the past couple of years, and I think all of our reports, talked about the need to diversify revenue streams, talked about the city's vulnerability because of our reliance on sales tax. We want to continue to raise that issue, and that, you know, we have, we have some pretty grave concerns with this million-dollar deficit coming up in, in just a year or two. So we want to encourage the council. I hear the city manager talking about starting a process in, in 2018, and I actually wonder if that's too late. I think that a million-dollar deficit is a huge issue that, that maybe we need to start on. I know we're all tired of doing the budget at this point, but I think we need to move on that sooner rather than later. I think we need to put everything on the table. I think we need to be creative. I think we need to be willing to look at things like the status of this building, and does that make sense fiscally for us to continue in this building? Or do, are there other options? I think shared services is another opportunity. The city has already done some great things with shared services around fleet, and I, I think there may be some more creativity, creative options there. I think that we on the Budget Advisory Committee are, are interested in looking at that shared services model for one of our projects for the upcoming year. Another issue that if you, I know everybody's reading the Budget Advisory Committee report, but if, if you don't remember, we have talked a lot about infrastructure. The city manager raised that issue. We have a $77 million deficit in terms of our infrastructure spending, and that's, that's another critical issue for the Budget Advisory Committee. There is no viable funding source for $77 million worth of infrastructure needs. That's roads, that's bridges, that's critical, critical infrastructure. Again, we're encouraging council to sort of think outside the box. We're also encouraging council to give the citizens, include the citizens, give them a choice in how we plan to address that. The Budget Advisory Committee is not recommending a property tax increase, but we are recommending giving the citizens the opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they are interested and willing to pay more, to have services continue, and to continue to strengthen and build our Again, to follow up on some of the comments that the city manager made, we've, we've been really excited to see all these increases in transparency, these online tools, the, the budget workshops that pulled in citizen input. We want to encourage city council to continue getting citizen input on the budget. As, as the manager alluded to, it's, it's not always, you know, the funnest thing. Those of us on the budget committee know that we're kind of nerds, and that not everybody loves public sector budgeting the way we do. But we really do like to see the citizens' input involved, and I, I know one of the comments from the workshops was that we wanted to make sure that, that that, all that feedback, all that input was being considered seriously, and that that information be available to the public, so that other citizens who were not able to attend those workshops were able to see what their fellow citizens said and kind of look in on that process. So at the beginning, I congratulated, appreciated council for extending our sunset and continuing the committee. There are a couple things in the ordinance that we would still love to have a dialogue about tweaking. There's, there's some things in there that we would like to clarify, because we know there are things that council has some concerns about around our charter and our mission. So we would like to continue that discussion. We're, we're very pleased to have our council liaisons back. We, we missed having that connection to council, and we're very pleased to have that connection back. A couple of the things that we're thinking about tackling for the next year are, as I said, shared services. Don't cringe, but we're thinking about looking at alley paving.
What?
Enterprise funds, and again, economic development as sort of the foundation for diversifying our revenue base. Those are just some ideas of ours. We're very interested in hearing what council would like us to work on and what would be beneficial for council. As I said at the beginning, we're excited to have some input from our new members and see what fresh ideas they're bringing. And as always, we love to have input from the citizens on what issues are important to them. So thank you to the manager for this time this evening, and great work on the 2018 budget. And what questions do you have for us?
Questions from council? Councilmember Russell?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I also am concerned about the deficit. And in your opinion, do you believe that we should have been dealing with this two years ago when we saw it coming, rather than waiting until now?
I would say that, that I think that the city manager has been doing a lot of house cleaning and sort of regrouping around issues. I, I think that there's been a lot going on around this, and I, I think it probably has not, ideally, we probably should have started looking at this years ago, but I, I think there were an awful lot of other things on the plate. And I also think it probably wasn't as clear as it is now, what that deficit was looking like, and that it was truly coming our way and unavoidable. So I, I think we've gotten a lot of clarity in the last year because of the, the new sort of financial strategy within the city. I think we've gotten a lot more clarity on what that looks like. And I agree, the more time to work on an issue like this, the better. And unfortunately, we were in the situation we're in, and we on the Budget Advisory Committee are happy to support council in whatever way we can around this very important issue.
I greatly appreciate that. And I, does the Budget Advisory Committee have any suggestions? I agree wholeheartedly with the fact that we need to keep the public involved. But we have a high percentage of residents that are living on fixed incomes, and their ability to continue paying and increased taxes, what happens not if they say no, but what if they physically cannot pay? Do we have suggestions of what we're going to have to do if that happens?
Well, I, I think the trite answer to that is we need to diversify our revenue streams. I mean, clearly, we do have folks that can't afford to pay more. I'm with the city manager. I grew up in a place where property tax was the primary source for municipal finance. So I'm unaccustomed to this reliance on sales tax. I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have folks in our community. And at our last meeting, we also talked about the impact on the businesses, because when we raise taxes, the businesses pay even a greater proportion of that than the citizens. So I think we need to be sensitive to that. But unfortunately, we have two choices. We raise our revenue, or we cut expenses. And at this point, we're a pretty lean machine, and the way that we're going to cut expenses is by cutting services. So I'm very sensitive. But I also think the citizens should have the opportunity to weigh in on, do they want to pay more, or do they want to give up services? I think that they're entitled to weigh in on that decision.
Thank you very much. And I, I just want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee for all the hard work and, and for the report. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bernton?
Thank you very much for the work that your committee did. I understand that when you put a lot in here about the sunset and the introduction, I do appreciate that. But the real meat of the, of the report, I, I think, is one of the better ones that you guys have put together. I, I don't necessarily agree with all of it, but I think that the meat is there and that the thought process is there, and I greatly appreciate the work that you guys did. I do want to make one small correction and give credit to who it is due on your tax sheets that were attached to this. The one that was done by the city for 2016 was an average, and so was really incorrect. And it was not council, but a councilwoman's husband, Dan Russell, who did the other one. So we save staff, he saves staff sometimes. See how easily I take credit? I say "we." He did this and made sure that we had an understanding that we were, actually, our property tax currently is hired in Denver, and did this so that we could have a better grasp, because the narrative has been going around that somehow Inglewood residents are chintzy, and we're paying some really low rate on our property tax. And Mr. Russell proved that we're in the, we're in the mix right up there with everybody on paying high taxes.
Do you have any question for our testimony?
Pardon?
Do you have any questions for the person giving testimony?
Yes, I do. The, thank you. Yes, I do. My, my father always warned me, if somebody's got to put a modifier before something like "you're basically beautiful," that it kind of takes away from that word. On the balanced budget, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around what the, what it means to be structurally balanced budget. And I would like your take on what you believe the difference is between a balanced budget and a structurally balanced budget.
You know, I don't, I don't know that I can answer that. I, I think I would defer to the city manager on, on that sort of subtlety in, in what, in his mind, the difference is between those. I, I think a balanced budget is a balanced budget. I think the Colorado State statute requires us to have a balanced budget. I think the, on the surface, a balanced budget means that your revenues and your expenditures match. I, I think that's a fairly simplistic. I've been in the budgeting realm for 17 years now, and I think that we have savings accounts and we use reserves, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think that money can be transferred across funds, because, for example, the, the city administrative functions do provide services to the enterprise funds. So I think to transfer money between funds is not inherently a bad thing to do. I, I think it needs to be done judiciously, and I think it needs to be done thoughtfully. But I think a balanced budget is when you're not showing that you're going to go into the red in the coming up year. And there are a lot of different mechanisms for how you get there.
I share your concern why the modifier is there. Then, and you said that you, that citizens are going to need to make a decision on do they want to pay more or give up services? And the information, I believe, was it provided in yours, or that since 2011 to now, the citizens are paying more, they're paying 7 million more, they're providing 7 million more. How much more above that 7 million additional dollars would you expect that they should pay before we should be looking at them to give up services?
I don't think I'm in a position to say what the citizens should give up. I, I think it's a matter of math. You either raise, raise revenue, or you cut expenses. And math is, you're an accountant, you know, it's pretty black and white. You either have more money, or you have less expenses. And again, I think we made a great step with the budgeting workshops in terms of asking citizens what their preferences are. I, I don't, I, I know that the five of us on the Budget Advisory Committee are certainly not in a position to make that decision for 30,000 residents. But math is what it is. You, you either have enough money to grow, or you don't have enough money to grow.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony, ma'am. We'll move on, again, to the public hearing roster. Again, nobody has signed up for the favoring portion, so we'll move on to the neutral portion, which is Jerry Walker. Welcome back, Mr. Walker. Welcome back, Mr. Walker. Thank you for your patience. If you'll swear in and we can begin this process.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council? Please state your name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the questions I have mostly are just about some blank spaces. And as I, I didn't have a lot of time to go through it, so I just kind of picked out a few things that, just had a question about. That was all. On page 129, there is a line there of total revenue from the city manager's office. And I see that some years we had at least 41,000 and 13,000. And then the budget for 2018, zero. And I was wondering where we used to make the money and why we don't anymore. And that was just a, just a question there. The other ones on page, on page 130, we talk about the fire suppression emergency medical services and the revenue under the fire contract oversight. And we have expenditures for personnel. Need to get my glasses out here. It's late. No problem. We have expended and we estimated for 2017, $338,000 and some change. And for '07 and for 2018, $289,000 and some change. And I'm gonna look at the bottom. I look at the employees and we have none. So I was just curious about who is actually gonna get that money for personnel when we have no personnel. The other one was on the license and permits. We have this huge increase in the estimate and in the budget of 2017 and 2018, that same number. And that is a dramatic increase, over 15, a difference of about $100,000.
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on page 168. And I was just wondering how we managed that big jump. Somebody needs to be congratulated, I'm sure.
Could you say it again now that we're on the page? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat what you said? I, I just got to the page.
Okay. Under license and permits. The actual from 2015 was $6,843 and we're budgeting $106,000 into 2018. And I was just curious as to where or how we got that much more money. Whatever it is, maybe we need to do a little more of that, right? And we also, just below that is the intragovernmental. And I don't see anything budgeted for 2018 when we had an estimate for 2017 of $314,000 and some change. And have we totally lost that intragovernmental or did we just forget to move the number over or what? That would be my question. And my last question is the one that I'm sure everyone's asking. I'm not against the budget and I'm not totally for the budget. I'm just curious as to how we're gonna do $98,000 or we're gonna take $98,000 to pay off $130,000. Because I'm interested in the way we're gonna do it, I really am, because I have a personal budget I would love to do the same thing with. Okay. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. I did, I did have one question on that last point that, I didn't totally catch that last point. Maybe you could restate that, the 98,000?
Well, I'm looking at page 103.
Thank you.
The 2018 proposed budget, all funds and fund sources, 98,000, I'm sorry, 98 million. It's late.
Wish it were thousands.
I had it, I had it right the first time, but I blame you and councilman. And we're gonna spend 130,787,827. And I am curious to know, I mean, if we can do that, great, not a problem. But I'm curious to know how we would do it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Berentone, did you have a question?
No, I was wondering where he was saying 98,000 somewhere. I didn't know what page he was on, but we updated a couple zeros, I think. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Now gonna move us on to the persons opposing the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. We do have three speakers. Our first is Coen Dickerson. Ah, people signed in below you, believe it or not. So, and then on deck is Andrea Mannion. Good evening, Mrs. Dickerson.
All right. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but this truth in the matter now being heard before the Inglewood City Council? Thank you. State your name and address.
My name is Coen Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street, Inglewood, Colorado. Okay. Jerry just mentioned it, $32 million deficit shown on page 103. I believe I know where it is. It's a misallocation of the police funding. There is 800, uh, 8,771 million expended in 2017, according to the 2017 budget. The balance of 24 million is shown as an expense, but the balance of the funds are not included in the capital fund balance. However, the total of that is 32 million. And we're not supposed to be spending 32 million, but it's shown in our budgets as expended, all 32 million. There are some other problems. There's capitalized items, software, phones, computers. And they belong in the department for which they were intended. I think there's 175,000 for updating the court stuff, the court software. That belongs in the court software. I mean, it belongs in the court budget. It doesn't belong under capital items. You cannot capitalize software and computers. They have a very short life. We've also been told that slate was far cheaper than in-house employees. Now, in the budget, it says we will save if we have it all in-house. I don't understand that either. Police staffing and redistricting. The chief said he needed four to add a district. I wonder if the city grew somehow? Because whether we have four districts or three districts, the city's the same size. And now I've heard Collins say that, well, we don't really need four new employees. He can make it work. And we have approximately a 400-person to one police officer ratio right now. A good ratio is 1,000 to one. So do we really need four more officers? There are many other problems. For instance, I looked and looked and looked and couldn't find anything about MOA. The last budget, we agreed to give them $90,000 or was it more? And they're getting free rent. It's approximately $240,000 a year. They've got prime retail space. And I don't see that anywhere, not even the 90,000. It must be buried somewhere. I attended two of the budget workshop meetings and I don't remember being asked my opinion or being allowed to say something about how we could reduce expenses. Just what would we like to do for placemaking and making the city more popular? I don't think that we should pass this budget at all until we can cut at least $5 million out of it and look at why we have a $32 million deficit shown. And why 8,771,000 was expended in the budget for the police building in 2017. And why the total of the two items, the balance in 2018 and 20, you know, and the total that was expended budget-wise in 2017, total 32 million. That $5 million in excess is still up in the air. And that should not, we only approved 27 million for the police building. It should not, that 5 million should either go into debt service or repay it immediately. It shouldn't be expended in the budgets between the two years. I'm desperately opposed to this budget. It's pretty, but as an accountant, I spent 10 hours reading the 218 pages and I couldn't make, it took me forever to figure out what had happened with the, with this. And I've been an accountant for 40 years and a forensic accountant. I think there's some serious problems with this. It's not been done with the, by generally accepted accounting principles. It must be the smoke and mirrors of government accounting, but still, there's a $32 million deficit just on this one.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Berentone?
You said the save in house and, and slate. Where did you, were you referring to the budget book? Do you have a paid?
No, I was referring to all the comments that had been made.
Oh, okay.
In study sessions, how much we were saving by using slate.
Okay. And the, the MOA cost, hold on one second. The capitalized, were you, were you talking about the sheets that were here for the capital improvements?
Uh, there was a, a list of items. It was, oh, shoot, it didn't print. Anyway, it was this one. And it was detailed, you know, as to the exact amounts. And on here, it says, "From 2018 through 2022, capital and public improvement projects recommended by staff. These projects are in priority order through 2018. Some projects we could complete in 2018 if additional funding was available." And they've got 2,295,000. There's mandated programs. The first two are mandated. I don't know what PRL is. What is PRL? Can somebody tell me? Okay.
Councilmember Berentone, perhaps you could redirect the question.
Um, so, on this list you're talking about, you said you came up with 175,000 that you believed should, did not belong here. Is there some way?
No, there was, there was, the court, court software upgrade. And when I looked down, it said 175,000. But that should be in the.
Did you give me the number, just the number of what it is? Because my eyes are.
Number 11?
All right. Thank you. I just want to go ahead and mark that off. That's all I needed.
Yeah. I think it belongs in the, you know, in the court budget. And it doesn't, you know, it's an expense. It's not a capital item.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I just wanted to see where it was. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Any further questions for Mrs. Dickerson? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony this evening. I'd like to come up, call up Andrea Mannion. And on deck is Elaine H.
[laughing].
Good evening, Andrea. I feel swearing.
Fair enough.
Um, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council? State your name and address, please.
Andrea Mannion, 3265 South Washington Street. I'd also like to start out by going to page 103, looking at the pie charts. If you looky, at total sources of funds, 98,584,086 dollars. And total uses of funds is 130,787,827. That is not a balanced budget. That is showing a 32 million deficit. On page 210, showing the police headquarters construction fund. So out of that 32 million deficit, I see the 24 million for the construction. And like Ms. Dickerson, I'm also confused by why 8.7 million was expended in 2017. And then also, I wasn't sure where's the bond revenue? Like, where's the revenue we got from the bond offsetting these expenditures? I didn't see that anywhere. On page 185, the communications budget is missing. The total source of funds shows 14,83,628, which is actually the police services. So I think that got mixed up there. It should show 434,015.
I'm going to interrupt, but it takes a minute for me to get to the page. Could you refer to what you said now that I'm on it?
Okay. So page 185?
Uh huh.
Um, if you look at total uses of funds, it shows 14,000, 14,83,628. That's actually the police services budget. That number should be 434,015.
Should be what, according to you?
Um, according to, like, on page 108, when the breakdown of the general fund, the communications number there is 434,015. So instead of the communications budget, I think the police services budget got posted And on page 212? The enterprise fund summary, it actually, it doesn't have the 2018 budget information. So I think that is also missing. You'll see, it just shows the 2017 adopted budget on the last column. And then on page 231?
I'm getting faster. Hold on.
No, it's a lot. The storm drainage fund summary, the total uses of funds shows 479,012. But on page 234 of the total expenditures breakdown, it actually shows 478,12. So it's a thousand dollars off from the summary. And then on page 258, the capital equipment replacement list. Actually, I had a question. I saw that there's three 2014 Chevy Caprices totaling 118,751.88. And I was wondering, shouldn't those be replaced in 2019 with a standard five-year life? So that seems to be some money savings for 2018 that we could probably take off. And then back on page 108, this is just really minor because I'm an anal accountant that likes to be to the penny. But under the expenditure, under the general fund uses, that public's work amount shows It actually should be 876. It's just a dollar off. So if you total everything now, it actually would be 47,301,919 and not the 920 that's And then I just had a little question on, on the program briefs on pages 18 to 63.
I'm sorry, give the page again?
It starts on page 18 and goes through 63. Those little program briefs, there's a little, like, inscription of the summary of the program budget. And underneath that, there's a question that says "Part of Inglewood 5," and it's a checkbox that says "Yes or No." I have no idea what that means. I have no idea what that means. And I didn't see any reference to it. So I was just wondering what that was.
Anything else, Mrs. Mannion?
I think that's finally it.
Thank you. Any questions from council, from Mrs. Mannion? Councilmember Berentine.
And the one for, 108 was the one where it was only, you were saying there was a dollar off?
Dollar off, yeah.
Okay. The 258 was the, how many vehicles?
There's three 2014 Chevy Caprices.
And you're just wanting to get an answer to why it's a three-year life instead of five?
Four to five.
Or four instead of?
Correct. Yes, why would that not be in the 2019 budget? Why is it in 2018 replacement?
The 230, page 231 was the difference between what's on 231 and 234?
Correct, it's $1,000 off, yeah.
Okay. And then 185, you referenced 108. And I missed what that was for.
So the communications budget, according to page 108, should be $434,015. But on page 105, it's showing the police services budget.
Okay, so the reference number is different on one than the other, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Further questions from council?
That was a lot, thank you.
Thank you. Let's move, thank you, Mrs. Mannion, for your testimony this evening. I'll move us on to Elaine Holtz. As opposed to Holtz, not Holtz, Holtz. Mrs. Holtz, please. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate credit for that. Come on up and we'll show you one.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. You affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the Inglewood City Council? State your name and address for the record, please.
I do. Elaine Holtz, 3350 South Lincoln Street. You know, it does my heart good to see the people that are coming forward tonight and telling you what I've been saying since 2009 and giving you actual proof of it. At 85, I really don't want to spend that much time. I'd like to play games on my computer, talk to my friends, and take care of my dog and have a great time with him. Because he's Mr. Personality, as everybody knows. But anyway, I'm going to take a new track. Because at 85, I don't know how long I'm going to be around. And of course, my friends don't believe me. But life is not eternal, not this existence at least. However, I can sit here and I can laugh. And I think I'm going to take that bend in my life. I'm going to start laughing more. I've been very serious about this community because I care for the state and I care for this community. I tried to live here back in early the 70s and it didn't work out. And I was disappointed. So the first time I had the opportunity of coming out here and relocating, I chose this area. I like the people. I like the history. I like the atmosphere. I like the little old pioneer time atmosphere that we are losing, unfortunately. But I want to say one other thing. You will all outlive me. And what you are going to be recognized for is for putting a terrible burden upon the coming generations. And I don't think they're going to look back and have sweet thoughts about any of you who don't realize the importance of doing your homework when you swore in to take on the responsibility of sitting up there and doing the best thing for this community. And you've laughed at me behind my back. You've made contradictory statements to me. I've been called the liar from the previous mayor, two, two removed, even by using their own numbers, their own report because they didn't understand it. And you know, if you don't feel that you are qualified or that you can spend the time necessary to really do the job that you swore to the people in this community you were going to do, then I would think we would respect you more for stepping down and letting somebody else take your seat. Because we are in a very difficult situation, not just in Inglewood, not just in the state of Colorado, but in this entire country. And if you'll notice and really go on the web where you can really get the truth of what's going on, it's going on all over. And we are going to have a disastrous time to face. I'm hoping to be in the ground before that happens because I've been through enough, I feel, in 85 years. I don't need anymore. But I want to tell you something. If we had another meltdown financially and what we had a number of years ago really was a depression, but it was a small depression. If something like that hits us again, when we have increased our, we're trying to increase our population and our infrastructure can't handle it. And the fact that we can't handle enough policemen financially to take care of the influx of more people who are coming from everywhere. And we don't have the job structure for people to work and play and live in Inglewood. And by the way, we're no longer full-service operation. So take that off the web, please. You know, it's a pity because I love history. And I love the fact that, that, you know, that Mr. Cohen brings us up to date on things that I had no way of finding or really being interested in about this particular community. But when I came here and my daughter told me some of it because she lived here for many years. And then I began to pick up pamphlets here and there and reading about different things that happened here and looking at the history of this town. This was a great pioneer town. And I tell you, I really admire the people that came here in those days because there was nothing here. And people took advantage of it. And they would, I mean, it was crazy. But they built something. They took and put their roots in here and built a great community. It's not a big community. It's only seven square miles. Littleton's far bigger than we are. But they had the foresight. And they were common, working people who had the old shirt and the blue jeans on and didn't care what people thought about them. And what are you doing to it? You're destroying it. Doesn't that hit you in your conscience? Don't you want to preserve what people want to come and live here for? They don't want to live in Denver. They don't want big buildings and people running all over the place. They, if they wanted that, they'd stay in Denver where the action is. No, they want to live in a nice little suburban community, raise their families, have a good school system, and, and sit back and relax.
Mrs. Holtz, I apologize. We did not start the timer at the beginning of this testimony. Would you mind wrapping up your comments?
I will.
On the opposing fiscal budget.
But what I want to try to tell you is what you are going to leave to the next coming generations is going to bite you in the back. So, but I'm, I won't be here too much longer. So I'm going to enjoy the ride, whatever is left. You have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. See if council has any questions for you this evening. Elaine, if you want to stick around for just a second for questions. Councilmember Berentine?
I like that Elaine H, which is E-H. There you go. I'm, I am, could you just briefly tell me what you think I'm leaving to the next generation? I am unclear.
I'm not saying you per se. I'm saying what has happened with city council, by the way the vote goes. I'm not trying to channel out any one individual.
Are you referring to the budget?
I'm referring to the budget. You are leaving them with an impossible deficit. And also by the building of the fire department, which I didn't feel was necess, I mean, the police department, which I knew was not necessary. You're putting another handicap on them. And believe me, it's going to bite you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine, for your testimony this evening. That concludes the speakers for this evening's public hearing.
Will we close the public hearing?
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Further discussion before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Can you move us on to agenda item 11? This is ordinance resolutions and motions. Under 11C, we have resolution, under resolutions and motions, we have the Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant bio solids farm storage pad repair and overlay project. Staff is recommending that council approve by motion a construction contract with Asphalt Coating Company, Inc. to conduct an asphalt repair and overlay project located at the wastewater treatment plant bio solids farm storage pad in the amount of $134,148.6. This recommendation was approved by the Inglewood-Littleton Wastewater Treatment Plant Supervisory Committee on August 17, 2017. Our staff sources Capitol Project and Asset Leadership Manager Chong Wu. I've got to get used to these new titles. Mr. Wu, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Good evening, City Council. My name's Chong Wu with the wastewater treatment plant. In the interest of time, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just skip through the first couple of slides. If that's okay with you. So as you are aware, as part of the wastewater treatment plant operations, we generate bio solids. These bio solids are then used as a soil amendment and fertilizer for our farms in eastern Colorado. Back in 2005, this is an area view of a portion of our Byers Farm property just located east of Byers, Colorado. Back in 2005, we constructed a dedicated asphalt storage pad. This was needed to accommodate the transportation and storage of bio solids during inclement weather conditions. During these conditions, the farm sites are actually, are inhibited or our tractor trailers cannot access these farm sites due to the conditions of the roadways. The roadways are muddy, they're kind of sloppy. So they're kind of hazardous for our truck drivers. We also needed to construct a impervious surface to actually store our bio solids. So this is a photo of our current existing asphalt pad. And over the years, the pad conditions have deteriorated. There are spalling and delamination of the asphalt surfaces. And this creates a risk to our equipment. If these asphalt pieces get entangled within our manure spreaders, it would create severe damage and severe cost implications to our equipment. So we do need to resolve this issue. So in 2017, there was a budget allocation of $150,000 for a pad repair project. We did look at other options in lieu of a repair, such as conducting a complete replacement with asphalt or even concrete. Concrete does have a potential to provide a longer life. However, based on our initial cost estimates, anywhere from the range of 400 to $600,000, we believe that a repair option is recommended at this time. We did receive two quotes for this repair option. And we recommended Asphalt Coating Company of Aurora, Colorado be awarded the contract as the lowest bid at $134,148.6. Again, this project was budgeted in 2017 as part of the benefits to use budget under the contractual services line item. And as of August 23 of this year, we have expensed approximately 30% of that budget. So there is budget available within this year. And I will take any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from staff? Or I'm sorry, from council? Councilmember Russell?
I do have a question on, on the budget page. When it has the $503,060, is it possible to get a running total of what we've already spent to this point?
I, actually, I did show that here. As of August 23, we have, we actually spent $136,931.
Thank you very much.
Further questions for staff? I entertain a motion.
Moved. Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote. Oops, sorry about that. Mayor Portem has a comment.
Yeah, a year ago, we went out. All of council was invited to go out. I was the only one that went with the city manager that time. And we went out to this pad. And these pictures do not show just as to how bad this pad is. It's, it's in poor, poor shape. So I wish that council, more of council would have come out and would have went out this year as well. But this is a repair that was needed a year ago. So I'm glad this is finally getting done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to agenda item 12. This is general discussion. We do have one item, mayor manager meetings discussion. If you don't mind, I'll hold that for mayor's choice and introduce that topic and move that forward. But let's start with just general discussion from council members. Anybody like to kick us off this evening?
Nothing to do, eh?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Martinez?
Sure. I just want to say thanks to all the staff and volunteers who helped out on the Keep Inglewood Beautiful Household Hazardous Waste event. We had it last weekend and then this past Saturday. Last weekend, there were 315 cars that came through. And then this past Saturday, we just had 248 cars come through to donate things. So that was really cool. It was a lot of participation. And a lot of the folks from Inglewood and Littleton really appreciated it. We got a lot of great feedback. So thanks again to all the staff and volunteers for offering that event. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
For this evening, I'd like to say tonight was a prime example of how our community has became a lot more transparent, how we've got a lot more information getting out to our residents and their involvement. I have to say, great job, you know? And that, that truly comes from the leadership that we've got in our city. We've came a long ways in four years. We were nowhere close to being this transparent four years ago. It's simply amazing. I'd like to say thank you to the community. Thank you to staff for doing the hard work and, and getting all of the information together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Yes, I'll piggyback on that, saying thanks to good technology that's come along to make it a little bit easier too. But it also shows that it's really easy to flip things and make mistakes and budgets too, so it's not fail-proof. We need humans to have eyes on these things. So it's great to have people come out and see things. Parks and Rec met last week. It was a great, great meeting. And I just want to confirm that we, as a council, decided we would talk about drones before they do. And so it's up on our council meeting, is that correct? That's what they interpreted it as from, I, I thought it was the opposite. I thought we were going to have them look into it. But somehow it got interpreted that we're going to look into it first or talk about the larger issue in, sometime in November. Do you remember that? I had it backwards, but.
Yeah, my recollection is that, you know, we asked them to take a look at recreational opportunities and that we, as a body, might look at, you know, a more general policy on right-of-way kind of issues. Does that match with other people's recollection of that conversation at the study session?
Maybe we can pull that.
Not hearing anybody jumping out of their chair.
Maybe we can pull that up because they, I think Director Hargrove thought it was the other way and I misstated during the meeting. But I, I think if we're going to do it, I mean, someone else asked me about it who was really upset that we might even consider it. So I just want to make sure I know if it is on our council agenda, then I won't ask them to look into it again. But if we are supposed to, then I'll bring it up. But they're doing a great job. I got a little tour of, that we met at the rec center and got a tour of some of the new stuff. And if you haven't been over there recently, go take a look at some of the equipment. And I hear Manager Kek is over there using it very well. Many other city employees. So encourage your neighbors. It's, I hadn't been there in at least four months. So it was great, maybe even longer. And I had one other thing. I forgot. Oh, well, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I wanted to pass this along to the city clerk. The president of the Inglewood School Board attended my town hall this past Thursday at 4G's and gave a very nice presentation on update on their construction projects. And I greatly appreciate that. I'd like to pass that along so that all of council can get that. I enjoy these town hall meetings. And we spent the second half having a robust conversation about a lot of issues in the city. And I greatly appreciate that feedback. So I wanted to let everyone know we have a joint town hall meeting on October 3 here. And we've, with Councilmember Russell at large and myself. And we have invited District Attorney George Brockler as the guest speaker to go into some. to go into some information on his job, some of the, how he interacts with some of the municipalities. And some questions that I know that got brought up at the town hall that I hope that he gets asked as well. And I think that that will give everybody a little bit more information how we interact with that government entity here in Arapahoe County. Wanted to bring up the mayor/manager meeting now that we're talking about transparency. And I think to best explain this issue, I will just read the very short email that I provided to council regarding this on Wednesday. "It was brought to my attention that the mayor/manager meeting, that the mayor/manager meetings were posted on the Inglewood City website. So I attended the meeting as posted at 2:30. That would have been Tuesday. It was very concerning that a posted public meeting was canceled, according to Mayor Jefferson, in part because the mayor pro tem was not in attendance. It seems that routinely, the mayor is the only one representing the city council at this meeting. Open meetings and transparency continues to be a priority to our community. And council needs to address this issue to ensure that we have consistent, open, transparent representation from our leadership." I greatly appreciate that immediately when this email was sent, that the city manager went ahead and took that posting for this notice down and suggested that this council come to some agreement on how we're going to handle the mayor/manager meetings. For, before I was on council in 2015, in November, the mayor, the manager, and I believe the city attorney often on, and the mayor pro tem met with the city manager to go ahead and go over the agenda. There were a lot of comments being made. And the public was concerned at that time that there were decisions being made that neither the public nor the council was being privy to. And so when these comments would come up during open session, as it did recently, about how we were handling the Inglewood Housing Authority, there is some disconnect. And I was advised by somebody that the mayor/manager meeting was still a posted meeting. And so the next day, I attended and was very concerned that the meeting didn't happen. Sometime after that, we did it for a year where it was recorded, open, public. And then at the end of that year, a little over a year, there was some concern from some council members that they were being recorded and that some of what they were saying while they were recorded was being, they were being held accountable to that. And this body made a decision to go ahead and in order to make it open and transparent, that we would go ahead and do the agenda together, open and transparent to the public after the council meeting as part of this portion of the council meeting. And for some reason, that just kind of went away and stopped. I don't know why. But the meetings were still posted. I went. And this has now brought us to that we need to make a decision on how open and transparent we are going to be. Again, part of this came up because of the comments that were made, that decisions were being made in this mayor/manager agenda-setting meeting regarding the Inglewood Housing Authority and how we were going to handle things and moving forward. And I'm still a proponent of it being open and transparent, being recorded, and being a meeting either in this body here or if it's going to continue in a separate meeting, that it be open to the public and recorded.
Thank you. Perhaps we could take that issue up since it's been broached here. Maybe can give a little bit of information as well. And maybe we can hopefully get a motion and move this forward. You know, I just wanted to highlight some of the history on it as well as Councilmember Berentone just did. You know, some time ago at the beginning of our term, we motioned and voted to make the mayor/manager meeting an open meeting. At a later date, we amended that policy in a study session without a vote to make it a private staff meeting. Last week, we had a couple of council members attend and asked to honor the open meeting policy we voted on. You know, we had no major issues as we set the, you know, went through the agenda last week. So to make sure that we honored the council intent, I did cancel this meeting. I'm asking tonight for a vote to amend the policy we adopted with a vote with a similar action so that I can have clarity and can honor the council intent moving forward. I am, you know, personally of the thought that this meeting should be recorded. I know that we did record these meetings for some period of time. I think that's the first time, you know, that we've had these mayor/manager meetings recorded. And I'm proud of that additional transparency. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just to be clear, Mayor Protem has always participated in the meeting. Staff has provided ahead of time the agenda and we discuss it. Sometimes Joe and I discuss, or Mayor and I discuss it before. City manager and I, because of my work schedule, it's hard for me to get here. But I'm generally here on the phone. So while I am not here physically, I'm still involved in the meeting. But that particular day, city manager and I went over it before I spoke with Joe. And I said, we've already gone over whatever you guys decide. I'm fine with. Just let me know. And that's how it's been. The accusation that the mayor pro tem has a bit involved is inaccurate and unfounded, which is not surprising. But we want to make sure that, you know, we, as a council, decided to move from that. Or I'm fine doing it in public. But the problem is, when we had it in open, none of y'all gave any suggestions. You know, it became this big, long, nothing meeting. So the responsibility of the city managers provide the agenda. And our charter says that the mayor and the manager go over it. And that Mayor Protem is invited to attend. So I am not required to attend. But I, Mayor Jefferson has kept me in the loop. And with the city manager, you know, we've stayed tuned. If I've given input on some things that I thought we needed to add or do it another date, and those inputs have been taking place. But our, obviously, we've had good agendas and everything's gone well. So the process has been working. And I don't feel the need to be here when I can call in and save me travel time to get here. So it's been very productive and fine meeting. So if we want to change it to the public meeting here, then, you know, those of you who are concerned, give some input. Don't just sit there and just say nothing, you know, or say, this is good. We want to continue doing it. So I'm fine with whatever it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I think it's the robustness of the conversation on just, and I kind of felt for the mayor being there by himself. I mean, that's a heavy burden for him to believe that he's representing the council. So I'm, if the, when the meeting was being recorded, it was made very clear that no other council members present except for the mayor and the mayor pro tem could speak. But at least we were there and had a record so that if we wanted to go back and then have some issue with the way the agenda was being handled, at least we had knowledge of it. And I'm sorry that that's not, minutes aren't taken and that it's not recorded. Because if the mayor pro tem is participating or has been, then there's no record of it so that we know how we're being represented. So at least for that sake, you would be covered if we had it in a more open, public process. I would, I don't know whether you're trying to make a motion, but I would like to make a motion to go back to having the meeting recorded and do it on Tuesdays at 2:30 and have it recorded. It was working fine. There was no interference from other council members. Just that we had knowledge and the public had knowledge of what was being discussed and how the agenda was being set.
Second.
Thank you. I hear a motion in a second. Further discussion on this motion. Councilmember Yates?
Clarify this a little bit. Are you, is the motion stating that it will still be recorded but not open to the public?
No, I specifically said, recorded, open, public, meeting.
I think whether or not they're standing for the public to speak, I think is, that motion's silent on. And I would say that, you know, generally, historically, that has not been the case. But if you'd like to add some clarity on perhaps that issue, if that's what you're getting at as far as standing to speak in this meeting?
Well, I wasn't going to talk about the standing part of it. Now, this meeting is an administrative type of meeting. All that we're doing here is going through the subjects that we need to cover for the agenda for this meeting. That's all we're doing. So in my opinion, if we're recording it, if you want that transparency for the recording, I think recording should be sufficient. But I don't think that we need to have additional distractions of being an open meeting where the public's coming in. You have a busy schedule. So does our mayor pro tem. And all of us have very busy schedules. So the only purpose of this meeting is to simply say, hey, we're going to have this, 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 and this on the agenda. So. There you go.
Thank you. I think it's Councilmember Russell?
Yes, I believe that it would serve the public well to have the meeting open. We go to a lot of meetings. I attend the Inglewood Housing Authority meeting. I am not allowed to speak. People come to the council meeting. They are not allowed to speak except for during public scheduled speaking. And I don't think there's a problem in being open and transparent with the public in what's going on in the agenda-setting meeting. And, you know, you're right. It's administrative and straightforward. And so there shouldn't be a problem with opening it to the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
If it was just open and straightforward, then why not record it? If the public is a distraction, then we should not have them here at this meeting either if they are a distraction to our business. I think recording it and having it public is the best transparency we can have. If you think it's just straightforward and administrative, then for the year that it was recorded, you must not have listened to any of them because there was additional information and concerns about how we were doing things. And it gave us, as council, representing our constituents, the opportunity to say, hey, Mayor, I think maybe you misspoke with this or I'm not sure why you're going with this. Because I had the opportunity to listen to the meeting. Or maybe Mayor Protem, I'm not sure where, you know, why you have a problem with us moving this onto the agenda. They were not necessarily straightforward. And there were a lot of, it brought in more debate and more information and more awareness, both for the public and other council members. And I don't think the public is a distraction. So I don't see a problem with recording it. We record this. Public isn't distracting us right now. So I don't understand the problem.
Thank you. And just to clarify your motion, though, your intention is not to necessarily, you know, on that standing issue, you know, give an opportunity for public comment or anything like that?
Oh, no.
Simply for attendance, correct?
To leave it exactly the same, the same as any of us as council member who attend any board or commission meeting. And we are not the liaison. We are not to speak unless we sign up for public hearing or we're invited to or we're asked to. We are quite used to not commenting. And for the vast majority of, I don't, Councilmember Russell, and I attended only a few times. But Councilmember Russell, when I would listen to the meetings, I didn't hear her talking. So she seemed to be pretty good with it. So-
Thank you. Just trying to get clarity. I appreciate that. Mayor Protem?
No, I wasn't trying to advocate for that.
I want to make a motion on their motion that we just move it to after-study session. We, everybody involved, and everybody gets to comment. You know what? If we want transparency and openness, let's just put it at the end of the meeting, which worked fine for me. And we don't have to worry about having our staff do more recording, more time from staff. Let's just do it open. I'm fine.
But we already have a motion on the floor.
And I'm motioning on your motion. So I'm putting, amending your motion. I'm doing an amendment on your motion.
Motion then is to amend, restate it one more time. I apologize.
I just want to amend her motion to that we just do our mayor/manager council meeting at the end of study session on, or at the end of council meetings.
Thank you.
I'm willing to stay extra to do it. I'm here.
Is there a second on that? City Attorney, help me out here. Is this an appropriate amendment to the motion? Okay, yeah, still within this time, place, manner issue. Okay, so we've got a motion there. Do I hear a second on Mayor Protem's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Let's further comment then on the idea of having it after-study session or during-study session. Councilmember Yates?
I'd like to get a little clarification on that. If we start doing the agenda in that fashion, are we opening it up for seven council members setting the agenda? Or are we setting it up just basically so that mayor, the mayor/manager, and the mayor pro tem can set the agenda while we all sit here?
You know, there has been some discussion, I think internally, about the unilateral authority to set the agenda. The city attorney's office came out with a memorandum here that was provided to council suggesting that the city manager has the authority on agenda issues. You know, I don't know that that's always been the practice internally. Maybe that's a policy we need to think about or chat about. But right now, you know, that is the interpretation of our city attorney's office. And so while all of us will have input, ultimately, that's where it would come from until, you know, in my mind, a policy change. Is that a fair statement? Does anybody have anything to add over there from city manager or city attorney's office on that?
The only thing I'll add is the complexity of setting the business meeting agenda could be difficult to try to forecast some of those business items as they percolate up through the process. Study session, absolutely. I welcome input from all council members. I think to establish a time to have a mayor/manager's meeting, there doesn't need to be a mayor/manager's meeting. Clearly, again, this is just my perspective. I think there's some trust issues here between council members and themselves. I, we don't, our staff don't want to get in the middle of that. We need to produce an agenda. We're happy to do that. We want to see it done transparently. That's the way we operate as well. So having it, as has been suggested, would work in our minds as well. And it does economize on time to, you know, broadcast that and the public can watch and listen. And we're okay with that.
Thank you. I'll move on to Councilmember Olson.
I think others were first, but maybe not?
Sure. I'll come back to you. Councilmember Russell, I believe?
Actually, go ahead and let Councilmember Olson go first. I'm fine. I'm waiting.
Oh, okay. I just know the other ones than I was. So I wanted to clarify again, Manager Kek. So you just said that you're fine with it being on Monday evenings, then? Do you think that's enough time for you to pull this together?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, again, we're talking about study session.
Yeah.
Again, business is a little bit more difficult. We're now utilizing the iCompass program. And I do have some visibility of things that are coming forward. We're trying to ask staff to forecast those well ahead in advance so we understand what items will be coming to the council for business meetings. But the more important topic, I think, is study session. And tonight would be an excellent opportunity to talk about what's going to happen next week, you know, with study session because of what transpired this evening in the study session on ADUs. Next week, you have short-term rentals. And my concern is, why bring up short-term rentals and get that confused with ADUs? So perfect policy opportunity for the council to weigh in.
Thank you. And real quick on the regular meetings, I do want to kind of reiterate what City Manager Kek is saying here in that the reality, if we do it this way, is that the council won't have much, if any, feedback on the business meeting agenda. Again, I, you know, internally, honestly, I think that, you know, the council should control the agenda. But perhaps that's a different conversation for a different day. Councilmember Olson, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I did. I just was trying to clarify that first. So when I was mayor pro tem, we did do it the way that you, that I think it's written up. The manager came with the agenda and we looked at it to make sure that something wasn't left out. And we, sometimes we mentioned things to make sure that was in the packet that we thought that all of us might want, tried to anticipate unintended kinds of things that could happen. And of course, you know, you fail along the way anyway, but you try and do your best. And it was always said, and the attorney did participate in those meetings and partly to make sure that we were not violating anything along the way. Meetings could be very short, you know, 15 minutes to a half hour. I understand before I was mayor pro tem that some of them went on for much, much longer, which I had questions about as well. So, and I think trust is an issue. This is an issue of trust. I would hope that if we go this route, that any of us that would attend don't pass notes, don't, you know, giggle or snicker or things like that that really do make it an awkward situation. I think I've heard from not you two, but people, other people who have attended through others that those kinds of things happen. I think nobody needs to go to a meeting like that and not be respected while you're trying to do your work. I also want to note that I know that Mayor Jefferson's had to cancel for meetings and couldn't do it at the exact same time. You know, it's happened both ways, right? I think that's true, where you've had to change things, I know. And you've had to cancel. So those things happen. So I'd hate to set this in stone. I mean, if Monday night works and that's best, that's pretty secure that you can not be interrupted with- be interrupted with a work thing. But if you can handle doing it later like this, I will be going home, because I absolutely trust you to set the agenda. And we'll bring up, you know, can we make sure this gets on the agenda next time, if I think we're not getting to something?
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I would like to make it very clear that it never has been a trust issue. When I was attending the mayor-manager meetings for several months, it actually was very informative to me in learning how things worked, and I understood that. I did not speak during the meetings ever, I did not pass notes, I did not snicker. It is, that was not the purpose. I was going there to observe. And I think probably in the course of that happening, the recording occurred. It is not that difficult for staff. The recording apparatus is set up in there, they record meetings in that room all the time. It's a matter of pushing a button and recording the meeting. It is not going to put extra burden on staff to do that. So these accusations that fly back and forth, it goes both ways. There, I think one of the things that I feel like is, some of the members on this council are very concerned about really being open and transparent. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
If we end up going to the direction that we'll be setting it as, you know, during one of our study sessions, you know, as is, we're kind of pressed on time during the study sessions, I think before we actually start that process, council needs to agree upon a process for how we're going to do it, how we'll conduct ourselves, what types of conversations we're going to have in regards to setting the agenda. Because as is, our meetings tend to have a lot of, well, a lot of things talked about that isn't either making, you know, asking a question, it's just a diatribe. And potentially, setting an agenda for these meetings will end up turning into a very long process. That's my concern about having seven people saying, hey, we want to do this, we want to do that, and we do have, you know, each one of us will make our comments, some people get right to the point, other people take some 10 minutes to get to that point. I don't have any problems in having it recorded for transparency. I think our meetings have done quite well with Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the City Manager setting the agenda. I don't see much reason to change that process. I do have concerns about having the public in a small office when setting these agenda. It was kind of a three-ring circus when we were making public, and people were showing It's an administrative process. We're just saying, this is what we're going to talk about. And council hasn't been able to make their input as to when we would like to talk about certain types of projects or subjects. So the prior, you know, we're still getting our input in as other council members. I would much rather take our study sessions and use them for study sessions instead of setting agendas.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Berentone?
It makes me really sad when I start hearing the narrative go again to that this is an issue of trust. Open government and transparency is not an issue of trust, and I do not appreciate it being couched that way. And I believe that those comments get made to be divisive and to divide us, and I would, I would like it to stop, it's not necessary. Trust has nothing to do with us being open and transparent. We need to make sure that all of council has the information on what's being said, how it's being said, and that the public has the opportunity to have that information as well. I really don't think we need to base this conversation into that kind of narrative. This is about openness and transparency. How we do that, however, I've said either way that you guys want to do it, it's fine with me, as long as it is open and transparent and available to the public. And that would need, mean that it would need to be recorded. There have been times through the year that it was recorded. It was not a three-ring circus. It was handled professionally and well, and I think it just gave an extra level of communication for us and for the public, and so I don't understand the problem or the pushback on this. But either way you want to handle it, if you want to do it at the study sessions, you want to do your own meeting and record it, and have it be an open meeting, however you want to do it, as long as in the end, it's open and transparent, that's good governance.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I just have a couple thoughts on this topic. We've tried it with the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem and City Manager in recording it. We've tried it with all seven of us together, and at least some members of council have issues with no matter which way we do it. So we've tried both ways already, and I feel like we're at this again, trying to decide how we're going to set our agenda again. I would prefer to use our study session time for study session topics and not for agenda setting. I'm fine with the way it is now, you guys meet, set the agenda, we all can provide input. If I, you know, I can reach out to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, and say, hey, can you make sure this is on the agenda? And that's it. I don't think it really needs to be any bigger of a deal than that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to withdraw your motion, or do you want to vote on this? I think that's the end of the comments here. We've got a motion on the table to do our agenda setting at the end of our study sessions. Any further comments? I too am not supportive of that. I like the idea of transparency, I just worry that we've cut down our study sessions to only an hour, and this could eat up this entire hour if we wanted it to. So we do have a motion and a second to move it to study session. Any further comments on that? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast.
Just one second here, please. Let's make sure I understand what the question is.
The motion is Mayor Pro Tem's motion to do our agenda setting at the end of a study session.
And that can be just with the mayor, manager, and city manager, with the rest watching. You want to go home? Go home?
I would, okay, there's some clarity to that motion. Who was the second on that?
I was.
Thank you. Do you accept that amendment?
That helps. No, I thought that's what it was to begin with, but it sounded like now we were talking about it being during study session. So if we did it tonight, any of us that wanted to stay could stay, and the rest of us can go home, right? If you two want to do it like that, I'm fine.
Most open.
Councilmember Berentone?
Anybody can stay and listen, then.
Did you have a comment there?
Well, if any council members think that it's not worth their time, then we would miss your input if any was requested. I do know that at times...
Mayor Pro Tem, can I, or Mayor, can I ask? That is an undercutting of my comment. It is not that it's not worth my time, I believe this is the job that we ask them to do, and therefore let it, let them do it. And I don't have trouble with them doing it, and I don't need to have it recorded.
I have the floor.
Okay, yeah, let's concede the floor to Councilmember Berentone.
It would be a shame. I mean, I think that at times during the recordings that I've listened to, that there were times that the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Manager tried to solicit Councilmember Russell's input, because they were maybe unclear on where some of council stood and wanted some clarification at times. So if we were all there, I would hope that our leadership would get that guidance for the people that still wish to attend.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So I have a clarification then to make. If we make this decision, does it mean that we need to all stay, and that we're expecting everyone to stay for your meeting?
No, ma'am. Study session...
Does anybody on this council believe that we're circling our duty if we don't stay? I heard that yes, perhaps so.
It's not, it's my opinion, it's not a slight of you.
Okay, no, that's good to know. So some people's opinion is that all of us should be staying, but not, I disagree with that. I think that's the role of the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem. That's really what your role is, to help us set the agenda, to slog through it with the manager. The manager's the one who comes up with it, you're to sort of modify it. But anyway, I would not want to commit any further council members to that kind of extra time, especially when it took this long.
I will support this, this is not my preference. My preference is to have a recorded mayor-manager meeting, but again, we'll have some preference here, or this, it seems to be the council preference. I will support this level of transparency. Councilmember Russell?
I just was going to say that if it's being recorded, it doesn't really matter if we stay or not. I mean, it's not required, but it would be open to us if we wanted to listen to it for some reason.
Yeah, and so just some clarity. So this would happen on study session nights at the end of study session, and on regular meeting nights at the end of regular meeting at the member's choice. Just wanted to clarify that.
And it will be recorded?
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show seven aces.
Councilmember Berentone, back to you on member's choice.
That was it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell? I'm sorry, City Attorney is flagging me down. Go ahead, City Attorney. Would you mind using the mic?
Another motion before that.
We had a motion, and then Mayor Pro Tem's motion was amending that motion.
That's correct.
So you voted on the motion as amended?
To amend, and now we need to vote on it as amended.
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, let's...
Thank you. So now we have amended that motion to the end of our regular meeting and/or regular study session. Any questions or comments on that?
Wouldn't it be funny if it was different? No, no.
Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Thank you for catching that, City Attorney. We'll move on to Councilmember Russell.
I just want to thank especially the public for coming out and taking of your time to look through the budget, and I just greatly appreciate the input. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Back to mayor's choice. I did just want to highlight a couple of short items here. That includes, this week we have the grand opening of the Inglewood Tavern at 4390 South Broadway, I believe at 5:30 PM. Please join us if you have time to welcome another Inglewood business. Last week we celebrated the grand opening of CNI right across the street in Dennis Woody's building there. That building itself is becoming quite a hub for the nonprofit world. The CNI is there, Big Brothers Big Sisters are there, Christian, Colorado Christian, what is the name of the nonprofit there, the religious basement?
You don't remember the rest of it, but you're right.
Yeah, so regardless, I'm starting to realize that the city itself, and particularly that building, is starting to become a bit of a hub for nonprofits. And the idea of coordinating some of these nonprofits has been sort of broached, and I think that we might benefit from getting some of these folks in the same room. So just FYI, that's something I'll probably be trying to coordinate and work with them to try to get them into the same room, to see how they might be able to help each other with their shared missions. And I think that's all I had this evening, city managers' choice.
Thanks, Mayor. Speaking of agenda, I'd like to talk to you about next week's agenda, and I'd like some feedback from all of you. So we do have two items that the council has requested that we bring back to the council relating to the Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant. Corolo Engineers has worked with our staff and has a presentation on the biogas project, looking at the different means of financing that project. So that would be one topic for next week, as well as a discussion of the standard operating plan that Director Kuzma would like to move forward with. We will have the monthly financial review, and then we'll also have an update from Public Works, as requested by the city council, on the Dry Gulch floodplain, and specifically the process by which it goes through the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the, their ability to either declare or not declare this area of Inglewood as a floodplain. So that process will be described, as well as what, another process of dealing with FEMA, and we want to get some feedback and some direction from council on that. The issue that I was hoping to get some direction from the council with this evening for next Monday night is, heretofore, we've had short-term rental housing on the agenda, to discuss how to look at that, how to regulate it. We know it's occurring in the community. We had a resident come last meeting to describe a problem that she was having on her street, Mariposa Drive. And specifically, the question before the council from my position this evening is, whether or not you want to see short-term rental housing come forward. This has been studied a little bit by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've made some recommendations for looking at creating a regulatory format for allowing that housing to transpire. But before we discuss that, I wanted to know if the council wanted to kind of put the accessory dwelling unit piece to bed, because they're not related, but they will become related very quickly because of the timing at which they're being examined. So just like some feedback on council, if you would like to see that continue to be discussed next week, or put to a certain point forward in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I would definitely like to see the short-term rental housing still be discussed, but at a later date. Doesn't need to be next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
When it comes to short-term rental, I'm in agreement, later date discussion, these other items are, I would say, more important to the community.
Councilmember Olson?
I don't know how we cannot have them link, because I think that's why some people want to do ADUs. And so I think we're going to always have that. So maybe both need to be studied independently, but understand what the intersections are, because I know that that's why some people want them. As long as they're going to live in their house, they could do Airbnb in their cottage. So I do think we're going to need to talk about them both. And if later date makes it easier for you all to do the research and get going on that, that's fine with me. It's going to take a ton of work, I think, but there's a lot of research that's been done, a lot of examples all around the country, so I think we have some good resources to tap into.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I think that we should probably go ahead and wait so that we don't confuse the ADUs any more than they already have. And I just had one other quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Corolo coming forward? I mean, are we able to address the issue of Littleton's use tax and the fact that they haven't, they're not putting the biogas into their budget? Are we going to be addressing that prior to voting on it, or?
Yes, that's accurate. So the structure, and I apologize for not mentioning it. So next Monday night, the intention would be for Director Kuzma and his staff to come and address this council. The following Tuesday, the 26th, they will also be meeting, Mark Ralph has set up a meeting, study session on this topic in Littleton, so they'll have that as well. Please recall that there is, while this council has included funding in the budget for the biogas project, that doesn't necessarily mean that funding's going to be utilized for such until such time, as both councils can come to an agreement that, yes, we want to do this project, here's how we're going to do it, whether it's the cities working together in tandem, it's seven and a half million dollars, so split that between the two communities, or we're going to do a power purchase agreement type of funding, or we're relying on some other third-party method of funding. So next week, we hadn't anticipated talking about the use tax, I think that's still an issue that's looming out there. You're exactly right, that has not been answered or addressed by the city of Inglewood yet on how that's going to be treated. That would require, again, some discussion on council and direction to further amend ordinances that relate to capital projects that we're participating in. So I think next week was more along the lines of we're answering the question, I said we, but the plant, answering the question of how the project could be funded, and then council can say, eh, we'd like this third-party piece better than cities financing it by itself, and we want to get Littleton's feedback as well, and then determine how to move forward.
And I would ask the mayor, I had the opportunity after I was made aware of it, I listened to their budget meeting, and the declaration, what they seem to have consensus on, is that they'll not do another capital improvement project with us as long as we're charging them use tax. So I'm not sure whether the chicken or the egg is coming first on this, but if you could kind of explore that, and let's figure that out, so that we don't waste anybody's time. If that's really the issue, then talking about the biogas is not going to get us anywhere. So, thanks for clarification.
Thank you. Real quick on the short-term rentals, you know, I really think this council needs to take this issue up. This issue of Airbnbs in our community continues to move on unregulated. The market needs some guidance. I had a gentleman show up at my district meeting last month, asking whether or not he should buy a house in his community to create an Airbnb. No, you know, he's trying to make some investment or business decisions, and he feels like there's no guidance from the city. He was happy to hear that we were taking this issue on. I hear that we have consensus to punt this a little bit. I would just encourage this council, and I guess future councils, not to punt it too far.